How's that?
The call is ordered in special meeting of Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, Thursday, November 12th at 2:07 PM. Would like to remind board members and public, if you please silence your cell phones, put them on off or silent or vibrate so they won't disrupt public or board communication. And would like to join the meeting, flag allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation and her God, indivisible, with all due diligence, self-sacrifice,
Here.
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 We're now at the point in our meeting where we're looking for public participation of a general nature. This general time is for items that are not otherwise scheduled on today's agenda. Each public participa will be given up to a maximum of five minutes. And once you've had your say, you've had your say for the agenda portion, when we get to the specific topics that are on the agenda, there will be more public opportunity to speak about this specific topic. So if anybody's interested, the kind of like process for general public participation is on the back of the agenda at this time. Are there any public members that would like to speak to the board? There mean none, we are going to go right into the business of the process water recycling project, preliminary design report, and AECOM change order. Manager Barber, would you please introduce this and bring us up to speed?
Yes, thank you. I've got a quick introduction and then I'll turn it over to the consulting team. We're at a decision point today, and I just kind of wanted to set the table for where we're at. We've got a plan proposed, we've been working on this for a long time. Staff has worked diligently with the consultant, various consultants, trying to determine what is the best solution for the district, what works best for us, what meets regulations, what they can actually operate. Because keep in mind, at the end of the day, this is a treatment plant next to a treatment plant. So the operators need to be fully involved, so they're comfortable with the operation. They know how to do it. The last thing we want here, to have two operators there because we need one run one and one run the other. If that's the problem, we can do this with our current staff. So staff evaluated the changing treatment plant process, all the evaluations, they had their input. We did our evaluation of alternatives, the board saw that, out of some time ago, hopefully will be covered by AECOM. We did an additional evaluation of that ones, and now we're here today with the preliminary design report. We have a time schedule order from the state water resources board. This started back in 2010, really, when we were doing our permit and realized that we're not going to get to a point where we can meet these requirements. And they actually gave us dinner on this, to meet as we figured out what our next steps were to continue operating our plant correctly. I want to point out something that we keep, kind of gets thrown in the back burner a little bit, but this process and this solution is going to recycle the process water that we currently lose. That's eight percent. If you go back the last 10 years, that was over $400,000 in the early 2000s, and then we got more efficient with our use of water, it's gotten less and less, but it's still a significant amount of money. Water is very, very valuable in California. I want to put a reminder out there, we've looked at alternatives, we've looked at, can we change our process that will meet those constituents? You could use UV instead of chlorine, have a treatment plant. You could change from aluminum coagulant to a different type of coagulant. We were concerned about our drinking water and what the end process is, and anytime you change the process, you have risk of unintended consequences. I have a picture up here to remind everybody, that mandates aren't always the best solution. What this is, is the first treatment plant that the district built when the surface water treatment rule came into effect. It was decided to build one that only treated water in the winter and not year-round, even though the regs were pretty clear that the end result was that surface water needs to be treated. So the district made a significant investment in that plant, and they got about five years into it before they figured out, uh-oh, we actually need treated water year-round, which leads to our current treatment plant design. So this is just my reminder, when we make decisions like this at this point, it's very important how we proceed.
What did this cost?
Uh, is it $3 million?
I think so.
I think it was $3 million. And last but not least, this whole process and project is about NPDES permit, which in which way I understand it, that permit is an opportunity for you to continue operating what you're operating as you spy your way to eliminate the discharge. It is a national pollution discharge elimination permit. Many alternatives we evaluated and looked at continue to provide a discharge. What's the next thing we have to worry about? What's the next thing that's in that water that may come up on the radar and that air solution is no more longer effective? So those are the points I wanted to kind of set the table with as you're giving the presentations and we're moving forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Bernard of AECOM, he's going to set their table a little bit.
Thanks, thanks George. I'm going to be very brief. We've done quite a bit of work, there's been some discussions regarding the alternatives. We've done a lot of work in reorganizing the previously layout, previously laid-out solution, and done pilot study. And Carl Boyer's going to come up and go through the whole presentation of, in detail, and then we can get into the nuts and bolts of your questions and any questions from the public.
So Mr. Chairman and board members, I'm pleased to be here, and George, thanks for having us up here. Not only do we have AECOM team here today with Tom, but sitting next to Tom is Jeff Thornton, who is a environmental specialist, I don't think I got the title quite correct, but he's going to be the guy who's going to answer some of the environmental issue questions that may come up today. And also today, we're very pleased to have Jeremy from the State Water Quality Control Board to answer any questions he might have about the NPDES permit that you heard George talk about earlier. Thanks for coming, Jeremy. So I understand you're seeing this on the screens in front of you, I'll be sort of looking at the one behind you. If I do any pointing, George, Kevin said he would be willing to flag those for you on your screen so you can also see where I'm pointing. So we can go to the next slide. Oh, I can do that here, sorry.
You have control.
I am control. I'm control the drivers, no, I'm not in control of the drivers. The drivers are what makes this project happen and why you're doing that. This is our proposed agenda, I will touch on the drivers, I will touch on the approach, revisit the selection of the alternatives, get into more detail on the description of the project. That's what we hope to walk away with today, is confirmation from the board that this is indeed the project we want to move forward with, and that sets the wheels in motion for everything else that has to happen in order for us to make our compliance deadline. We'll talk also about the schedule, and the last thing about an engineering agreement amendment necessary to realign the existing scope of work with the now redefined scope of work and a budget accordingly. So what are the drivers on this project? George mentioned it earlier, it's, you've got a situation with an NPDES permit that requires you to do something to achieve compliance. The time schedule order puts an actual compliance schedule in front of you to make changes to the process to comply with the effluent standards. That particular time schedule order, or the TSO they call it, originally had one date of, which was already been passed, and then a second TSO came out, and it was in front of you, you saw it, which amended that schedule, so now your new schedule is to complete these improvements and be in operation roughly two years from now, January 1, 2018. That's that last bullet there. There's a couple of intermediate milestones that we're on schedule to make, all of those with your action today. Another driver in the process is, gee, you know, we've got a few other smaller things that really need to get done out of the treatment plant, so while we're at it, can we go ahead and do those at the same time? And we'll be talking more about those. The overall approach to achieving the compliance with the NPDES permit is to focus on the E word, eliminate your discharge to the reservoir, which would in turn get you out from under having to have Jeremy come to your meetings. Okay? And we will do that through a series of improvements to the plant, which consist of treatment and storage, recycling of the water, and ultimately, final disposition of any residual solids that are left over from this process, and presumably they would go to the landfill for disposal. Now, there's another situation. We call it zero discharge, but there's no such thing as absolute zero discharge. There will be situations, in extreme weather events perhaps, when you have too much water, you don't know what to do with it, and we'll have to come up with some sort of emergency management planning effort to what do we do with all this extra water? We've already identified an emergency management plan for this excess water, and actually have had some conversations with the State Water Quality Control Board about this, because they are also realistic and realizing that, yeah, something like that could happen. Paradise Irrigation District's not the only district out there looking at going to zero discharge, so others are also being faced with this situation. So a little advanced planning and conversations up front now can help us avoid an oh-my-gosh situation later on, what are we going to do? So this is a way of planning, a fail-safe way of managing a potential uncontrolled event. So this is a way of controlling a managed emergency situation. And I go into some of the details here, but we're going to skip that and keep going forward. Up on that right corner, you see that photograph, guys? That is the pilot plant that was done up there. You recall that, we're going to touch on that. First, I'll just go through real quickly the existing process, I'm sure you're very familiar with it, you've seen it, actually drawn up this before. On the left, that big black arrow is your raw water supply, on the right, your big black arrow, distribution or transmission water going into Paradise. And in between, we have chemical addition, those are those vertical-looking ovals, adding NaOCL, that's the liquid bleach, or hydrochloride we call it. You've got another supply source of coagulant called alum or ACH, could be going in there as well, and we're adding a chemical called polymer. These are things that help that treatment process perform. The treatment process consists of upload clarifiers, filters, followed by a treated water storage tank. That water is used to backflush the filters. Raw water itself is used to flush the clarifiers, and those produce waste streams, and this is what we're talking about today. What are all those waste streams coming out? Waste clarifier, flush water, filter to waste, waste filter backwash, and then there's assorted smaller side streams that aren't important with respect to this, because now, we're not just going to collect the wash water and try to send it back to the pond, we're looking at putting it back into the drinking water supply. So it's important to just focus on, is there anything in those side streams that we don't want to get back into the drinking water supply? And so your current process, if you goes into an existing tank that you're familiar with out there, sodium bisulfite, you take out any residual chlorine, goes up to the ponds, you're very familiar with this. Now, there's a big white space in between here, oops, I went too far here, big white space in between here, that's where the new facilities are going to be going, we'll get to that slide in a little bit. The original concept, how did we get here? Well, this is our starting block as AECOM, you're consulting engineer, this is where we came in. George mentioned this process has been going on a lot longer than that, this is our starting point with you, so bear with me. This shows a site plan, it shows Skyway Drive around the top of the arcing across the top of the site, and inside the site, you see a bunch of topographic lines. Basically, the bottom-left corner, that long rectangle, was the process treatment system, followed by some storage at the end of it, where it would be pumped back to the plant. The orange circle here is your existing wash water tank, that would receive all the blended water, and would send it down a hill to the, this site area here. Now, keep this site area in mind, this is something I'm going to be talking about a little bit later, because our investigation found some interesting things about this site that are going to be important in our decision-making today. And then any waste sludge, it's treated at this particular area where the old Clendenon plant is, the picture that George showed you earlier. That structure is going to be demolished with this program and replaced by some new tankage. So this is the concept that was developed in March 2014, early 2014. In general, it was a reasonable concept on how to approach the zero discharge approach, and then we were asked to take, to review that and come up with a way to make sure it's going to work properly. So what's changed since that March 2014 report? First thing is, the treatment process has changed. Not in a big way, but more a refinement type of way. We're still going to capture the water, sub out the solids, and de-water the solids. We're still going to recycle water back into the plant, but with a few refinements that make it even stronger and more reliable system. Why did we make that change? Well, the first thing is, we did a pilot demonstration test to make sure that your process will work as intended. As engineers, we don't want to guess, we want to tell you that it's going to work and you can count on it, because that's our reputation on the line, that's very important to us. I had an interesting quote from our former CEO from our company. He went to see a client who was very unhappy with our work, and he went over there and tried to smooth out the business. Afterwards, he gave a briefing to our staff that was there, and he said to us with a very strong Brooklyn accent, "Look, we've got two things we can move on this project. One, money, two, reputation." I can always make more money, he said. So from a consultant standpoint, it's not a reputation. We want to ensure that if we recommend to you, it's going to work. The last thing we want to do is have something that doesn't work associated with our company's name. So we want to stand behind everything we say, and that's why we did the demonstration pilot test to make sure. Why is it unusual for your process that you have to go to this extent of doing pilot treatment plant? Because you are blessed with a wonderful water supply in that reservoir. The waterfalling in that reservoir is exceptionally good, exceptionally good, which means the liquid waste stream coming off in that process wastewater was exceptionally low in solids content. The normal process for treating that type of wastewater means it's a lot more content, more solids are in there than usual. Then it's easier to treat, but when you have a very low concentration, that's when we say, let's do some pilot testing to make sure that will work. So the pilot test basically showed us that you don't need all that big tankage down there at the bottom, you can go with a smaller version of tankage and save some equipment costs and not use up as much of the site. Okay, so I went on a pretty long explanation about that, but I've got a few more things to talk about what's changed, I'm trying to go a little bit faster now. So stay with me, if you have any questions, just raise your hand. Additional flow equalization bucket, the previous alternative, and if I had some area on the site, you remember the green area back on the bottom, at the very bottom of the screen, that was available for storage. But our proposed plan is to provide a lot more storage. Why? It's so that we can reduce the design flow conditions for these treatment processes. We have to size these units to handle a certain amount of flow, and if the flow is high, then the equipment has to be bigger. If we can control those peak flows so that we can provide a steady average flow to the plant, we can reduce the size of the equipment, that's what we've done. The other thing is that if you give more storage capacity, it gives operators a lot more flexibility on how to handle changing conditions at the plant. When things are going along smoothly at the plant, you call the guys up, everything's fine. But when they get, things start going out of whack due to weather or other natural phenomena, then they have to have all the tools in their toolbox available. And this gives them one that's really valuable to them, helps them with that. But what's the impact for the project that makes those storage facilities bigger, in this case, adding new tanks? There's another side stream that we talked about, which is the filter to waste side stream. This is a side stream that came off, comes off your current process and is mixed with the backwash water and the flush water, but this water is actually very clean over there, and it's suitable to redirect straight back to the raw water supply without treatment. And this is totally compliant with the federal guidelines and the State Water Quality Control Board. So if we can segregate that stream and keep it separate and put it back into the raw water, that means it doesn't have to go through the whole process of re-treatment through the process water treatment system. Again, keeping that footprint smaller, putting the size smaller, why treat it if you don't have to? One more page of what's changed since the last time, is I mentioned about that southwest corner of the site, it's going to come back to us here. That southwest corner of the site is a residual from the last big plant expansion where they had to cut into the side of the hill, add muck and soil that came out, it was all spoiled and just dropped in that area down there. So you're standing on top of an area of unconsolidated fill material, it wasn't properly screened or compacted, which makes engineers like us very worried about what kind of unforeseen conditions could we experience during construction. When we estimated the cost of building that area, and we did look at it, we estimated the cost of digging it all out, not just the unconsolidated fill, but also the old pond that was under there before, soot, silt, and sort, and bring it back in and putting layers and compacting the property, and then bringing any extra fill into the earth, we couldn't use all of the stuff that we couldn't use. So that is a risk during construction, you start loading up an area like that, you don't know what you're going to find. We understand it could be anything from normal rock, sand, and gravel, to boulders in there. So our geotech guy tried to punch a hole down there, he hit some of it, we had to stop. We don't know what hit, but we have a hundred percent of boulders, because we actually have a guy in our staff who worked on the original plant that's out there, who took some of that and told us. Be careful with that site. Right next to that site, you also have the one and only artery or watering that's coming over Paradise, right next to that site, if we're going to overcut next to this pipe that has the maintenance service and not the alternate protective, it would require some sort of protection, we would use sheeting and shoring. Sheeting is sheet piles driven into the ground right next to the pipe, or say this is the way, and then at the end of the job, when we excavate, put the fill back in, at the end of the job, we'll take those sheet piles back out with the vibratory tech thing. Every time we put it in, put it out, potentially could be damaging, you want to hold the raw water and serving it to your customers. So we see that that's a risk area. So we put our heads on, said, what can we do to mitigate the risk of building a massive particular site of the property? We came up with an idea. You know, the old chlorine building's not being used anymore. It's abandoned. I think the plan was to put the snow blade, the snow shovel blade in there, that plow, the snow plow blade inside there, so it was just a place for storing some equipment. We said, well, could it be used for a tank? And the preference was, well, yeah, we'd love that, the model that those who just want to use it as possible. So we actually looked at now moving it into that area as well, and changing the construction materials to reinforced concrete. The last thing is, I mentioned earlier, the fail-safe preparations in advance of emergency discharge in coordination with our regulatory agencies. This is something else that's changed that was not addressed in the previous alternative. And that means impact is, take that old existing tank that's out there now and repurpose it for emergency purposes, where we would put it in a standby mode, have it ready to go into service if we didn't need it. In the words of your chief mechanic out of the site, we're going to hoff all that, and that it's ready to go back into service if we need it. So now, all that big white space that we saw in the previous process flow lab, we have it still there, but the new process is shown in gray and dark gold lines and lettering. So starting from the left side, stay with me here? Okay. This one here, coming off the filters, would come down, this is your filter to waste, with equalization and pumping station, return that water directly to your raw feed without any type of treatment. Okay? Next to this, all the other ones, including the clarifier flush, the filter backwash, and these other side streams would come in to a new backwash residual equalization storage tank pump station. And then it would go to a process water treatment plant with a new chemical addition being the polymer. The finished water, or in this case reclaim process water, would go into another water equalization storage tank. Then the fun starts where we can reuse that water. It can go one of two ways, you can go up, where it's used as the clarifier flush water supply, or it can go down and around to back to the head of the plant, or it's recycled. The sludge or the solids coming off the process water treatment plant would come down here to a separate treatment process, which I'll get into next. So in summary, reclaim process water is the name of that process. We will return that water back to the head of the plant with a target of maintaining about less than 10% of the total flow of your in-raw effluent to the plant would be made up of this reclaimed process water, on average, on typical situation. And with the flow equalization we're providing, that helps you maintain that ratio of less than 10%. So here's how it lays out on the site plan, as presented in the preliminary design report. We are no longer down the southwest corner of the site. Those tanks have been moved up here to the small blue footprint, it used to be a very big blue footprint down to southwest, now moved up here, small footprint. These are the lamella separators with very steep-shaped bottoms on them, that'll be thickening the solids. And then the finished water would be stored in these tanks for equalization for clarifier flushing, and some of it would feed back into the head of the plant. Over here, there's another box with the same color, this is the filter to waste backwash tank, it's located right behind what is now the abandoned chlorine building. The abandoned chlorine building would become the place where all the processed water would flow to, and be stored here, equalized before it's pumped up to the treatment plant. All the waste solids coming off the lamella separators would be routed over here to the de-watering facility. And then the existing tank would be converted to a new purpose of emergency storage.
Have we decided what type of de-watering, the compressor, is it going to be a compressor, a centrifuge, or is it going to be a water press?
Right now, we are recommending that the process be a centrifuge, high-speed spinning equipment, very high-precise machine, but we're also looking at the possibility of another device as well, which is the rotary drum press, and it's also one that we took a look at down at Folsom Water Treatment Plant, they just installed it. It has its benefits, and it has some drawbacks as well. The bottom line, though, is where are we going to go with this material whom we're all set and done with? What are their requirements that they have to have, what do we have to meet? So as part of this project, we were working under the guidance that the local landfill would take it if we could maintain solids above 20%. So we targeted 25, just to make sure it gives us a little extra buffer, and that centrifuge would be able to do that. George, do you want to add anything to this?
Well, we're working with Buick County Landfill. There may be a challenge, they're looking for 50%, so 50% solids, 50% liquids, so that's something we're working with them on, we're looking at alternatives, we're handling that. The big difference between what we're doing now and what we're proposing to do is, we collect this in the ponds and we excavate it out, and we dry it out in the summer and deliver it once a year, twice a year sometimes. In this process, we can be offloading it in five-yard increments, so much smaller amount, about 10% probably of what we deal with now. So we're hoping to come with a resolution that allows us to take either the filter press or centrifuge at that level and find a place to dispose of it. But it's more of a regulatory process and trying to find a solution. But it's, it's more of a regulatory process and trying to find a solution. The cost, I don't think, is greatly different between a centrifuge and a filter press. So it's something that would be handled in design.
Sell it to Japan.
Are we looking at two presses or two centrifuges? We were talking about one originally and then if that went offline for some reason, whatever, mechanical failure?
We've talked about redundancy. There's tons of redundancy in the plan in that, for that piece of equipment. We will, we'll fine tune it because we can potentially get a temporary one if we need to. I don't, I don't know if your plan includes two or not. I, I don't.
I can take that. So, good question. This facility right here, which is the de-watering facility, this appendage off to the upper-left side of it, that is the sludge storage tankage. Those sludge storage tanks should be able to hold up to about two weeks' worth of sludge. And the, and the operation analysis that we've done, we, we feel that, we believe that the press, the de-watering machine, only has to operate one day a week. So if there's something goes down or wrong with the equipment, you've got some excess storage when you're to deal with it and give enough time to be able to make some repairs or do something in the interim until it can be done fixed. So the plan is to put one in, have space for a second if needed.
Okay, good. That's, yeah. What happens to the ponds?
Oh, good question. The, the ponds will become, the same thing will happen to this particular tank. Because the ponds, we are just a part of your new emergency storage and discharge facility. So the, any excess water you might have would go here, then the pumps that are in this building pump up the hill to the ponds. And the ponds will remain as is. So you have extra storage capacity at the ponds. And then if they fill up, then you would overflow into the mega gale. Okay? We gotta use it. The first line of defense would be to send the water here. And this water can be recovered and then returned back to the treatment process.
Are we going to have to re-line the ponds?
That's not my understanding, that we don't have to re-line the ponds.
That's only an emergency backup, really.
Emergency backup, right.
Wouldn't we not also have a return from the ponds to get that water back down when we can use it and clean it up again and run it through?
At this point, we're not planning to do that. It's possible, but we're seeing something that looks likely not going to happen.
It won't.
I mean, our analysis looked at five years' worth of your actual operating data. And under that entire five-year period, there's not one instance where we would have to spend one drop into that emergency storage tank. Now, we're talking about going back to what, the 1997 event that, you know, you had this.
Huge.
Natural event that just blew away everybody's water utilities. In that situation, then you're going to be in that situation where you have excess water, what are you going to do with it? At that point, you don't really want any water back, you just want, you need to get rid of it. And when you go talk to the folks at the state water quality control board in an event like that where everybody's impacted, you're going to get a more sympathetic ear from the state regulatory folks in terms of how you deal with that situation.
If we have a good system of excess capacity now to handle all of the smaller events.
Right. And just have a plan, a plan to deal with it. It's probably putting yourselves ahead of some of the other folks.
Would they require an NPDES permit on that water?
Now, we met with Jeremy, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but he said, no, we don't need to do that.
Really? Because it would be, it'd be an event that would happen.
One in a hundred years as well.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Hopefully that, one in 10, yeah.
And then that's just a, like a sort of a isolated event, a one-off situation you might say, and that'll be handled accordingly.
Well, apparently they've changed their minds then, Jeremy, because Jeremy's aware I was up. I spent two days in Redding trying to get more knowledge on this. I met with Doug Barber, who, you work with Doug Barber or is he your boss?
Yeah, Doug's an argument. Yeah, we comprise the NPDES.
I, I asked that very question to have some stuff in front of the book here. He said, anytime you dump anything in service water, you gotta have a permit.
So the NPDES program is intended to be in place to protect service water when you have a kind of one-source discharge. And so anytime you do discharge service water, you do need a permit. The caveat being, in this case, the way this district plan operates and the way a lot of our discharge operate, it's a continuous discharge, it's maybe intermittent or less frequent discharge. When you have something to the effect that your consultant's talking about with regards to extreme wet weather event, something that's not going to happen commonly, oftentimes you hear like, our board is kind of around that 100-year strong frequency. It can happen more often than that, when you say 100-year event, something like that, where lots of people are impacted, your ponds fill up and you end up discharging service water. That is technically a violation of the Clean Water Act because at that point, you're discharging without a permit. But the caveat is, it happened due to an extreme wet weather event. And in the past, as an indication of kind of power, the temperature of our board, those kinds of, you're not going to be the only person that's in that situation. Everyone on around you is probably going to be struggling, they're going to have catastrophic failures with various utilities. And so while it's a violation of the Clean Water Act because you're discharging without a permit, the enforcement of that is going to be a no, yeah.
In writing. Can we get it in writing?
What, what, let me see if I can address that, go between you guys, was what I heard in our meeting here, I mean, was that the day that the, the new plant goes into operation, your NPDES permit is not going to stop. The board, I mean, the water quality control board has indicated a preference to keep your permit alive for at least a demonstration period to show that it actually is working properly. So they want to kind of hang on and keep monitoring this under permit conditions for a little while, until they're satisfied that, yeah, this is good. Then make a formal presentation to their board to do whatever action is to close out the permit.
Yeah, see, the NPDES permit right now is just administratively extended as US EPA has inspired it to make along with the time schedule order. Inspired and we put in place a new time schedule order. And so right now, US EPA is, there's a lot of water treatment plants and EPA's region, our region, that are doing recycle projects. So in the meantime, you have one, two, three years, we're covered by NPDES permit, but it's not been renewed yet. So when this goes online, you have the option at that point, we can renew the permit as kind of a safeguard in case you discharge, or we can rescind the NPDES permit based on, on the facts that are presented by the district and by this design project being implemented and by review of your preliminary design report, information from the consultants. You put together a package and you present it to the Central Valley Water Board saying, we don't plan to discharge, we don't implement this recycle project in such and such a way, and therefore we don't imagine discharging except for maybe catastrophic conditions of X, Y, and Z. At that point, we can rescind it. The district should choose to remain enrolled in the NPDES program for time being as somewhat of a safeguard in case you have this, do have to discharge. But that hasn't been my experience with other water treatment plants.
So is our assumption and what AE comes, or interpretation I should say moreover, of zero discharge eliminating having an NPDES permit completely? That is what you, everybody's shooting for, right?
Correct.
So we've had some talk about doing a wetlands project, which would still entail that permit.
Correct.
Are you guys in favor of that as a alternative?
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, generally speaking, as a regulatory body, you know, generally you have to pay for one or the other. A wetlands treatment process, I've heard of it in concept and it's been implemented, I'm sure of it. And in our jurisdiction with water treatment plants in a similar scenario, we haven't seen that implemented. This kind of approach, or recycle water approach is pretty common and is the way numerous other water treatment plants are going currently. We have several other water treatment plants that have expired NPDES permits that are going through a design process like this to attempt to eliminate the discharges in a similar fashion. You know, there's, there's subtle differences, but. So not to say that other alternatives aren't out there, the thing is, a lot of these alternatives have been explored by your district and this has been the alternative that's been chosen. And working with your district, this is how we shape that time schedule order to provide the district with several more years of time. You know, if we had to implement that time schedule order right now as we speak, there'd be violations each month, there'd be mandatory penalties, there'd be fees associated with it. So based on the alternatives and selections that have been chosen to implement this recycle project, that's the time schedule that comes from it. And not to say that other alternatives are not that have worked, there are, and I think you guys have probably seen some of them, but you know, that's the water board, we're not going to say we prefer one or the other, that's.
But the, but the goal is to not have a permit at all and zero elimination.
Yes, the goal is to get out of the NPDES program. Because it's, it's more burdensome, there's these mandatory minimum penalties that I spoke about legally. When you exceed an F level, then you're slapped with a $3,000 fine every time. And there's a little, we have less discretion in the NPDES program because of legislation that came on it. So we have to fine people for various efficiency violations. And so getting out of the NPDES program has been the goal, it's been the goal of our water utilities. And so, yeah, these recycle projects are, are what we're having to do that. From what I've heard from consulting engineers and conversations I've had with the district, the path seems, seems to be clear.
Jeremy? It sounds like you're not concerned about what it costs the district to handle this problem. It's just that we want the problem handled, is that it?
No, I mean, certainly money is a concern, is it my concern as a regulatory agency? You know, we're not going to, we're not going to pick and choose, we have up here constituents, up here board, find out what's cost type of solution. Certainly, you know, as a regulatory agency governing the site, we're not, you know, our, our goal's not forcing the most expensive product possible. Simply in this case, we're trying to eliminate discharge. There's been alternatives out there that have been put before your district and, you know, as Central Valley Water Board is represented, I can't say, I can't pick the solution. I can say, these are the regulations that the federal Clean Water Act require, this is what the California Water Bill requires. Here's your compliance schedule to meet those requirements and then.
Another question I have, it's been brought up in the past to the board, that NPDES is going to get tighter and more stringent in the future. Is that true?
Yeah, you know, policy changes. It starts at the top, the NPDES program is a federal program. And so when US EPA comes out and says, we've discovered X new constituents to turn, we've done some more testing and our policy's going to change. For instance, our wastewater treatment plants are dealing with total of, they put forth a new criteria for some pollutant. And they leave it up to the states to implement that in a timely manner. And so, yeah, I mean, the way things are going, things tighten up, it's kind of the natural way of things. But it doesn't start in the think tank of like the Central Valley Water Board. It usually starts at the federal level with US EPA. They come out with some type of criteria and then you're given a time, usually five, 10 years or more. But utilities, wastewater, water, industrial, everyone's affected by it, anyone that discharges service water. Because a new service water criteria comes out to protect human health or aquatic life. When that, you know, science is constantly evolving, constantly changing, and we find that there's new pollutant concern out there that needs to be monitored for and we need to set criteria for people discharging it, then yeah, it's a little bit unforeseen, you know, I can't predict the future. But in general, by getting out of the discharge of service water, you eliminate that altogether because you're no longer discharging service water.
Except if we have an accident or overflow for some reason.
Right. And when you have an accident or overflow and it falls in this extreme wet weather event, Armageddon style scenario.
What happens if it's just an accident and it isn't a wet weather thing?
If it's just an accidental spill, it's, you know, it's no different than the way we talked about in the meeting. It's no different than if you had an accidental spill right now. Your discharge permit, your NPDES permit allows you to discharge from a specific point in the plant to the mega gale. It does not allow a discharge from a busted pipe, a leak tank, you know, faulty treatment process. So if you did that right now on your current permit, it would still be a violation. There's, there's no difference, it's still an unauthorized discharge.
So if we had an accident with this new plant, we would be in violation of what? If we no longer have an NPDES permit?
You wouldn't be in violation because it's not an anticipated point discharge. You get a permit for a point discharge that you're supposed to be driving.
Okay, but let's say we, we actually have an accident or something gets in Little Buick Creek. What is the results with the government?
That is a violation of the Clean Water Act. It's still an unauthorized discharge to a creek. But, you know, if it's, the likelihood of the Central Valley Water Board coming and loving this huge fine or something, I mean, we can speculate, but you know, anytime anyone discharges something in service water without that point source being, you know, a point of compliance, it's a violation of the Clean Water. But violation of the Clean Water Act is kind of this only comes in term, which, you know, will the Central Valley Water Board take enforcement action? Most likely, no.
Difference between we open up a big valve and let it just discharge into Little Buick Creek or if we have a ruptured pipe?
Right, right, absolutely.
That is not an intended discharge?
Yes, the Central Valley Water Board hardly has discretion to work with people, you know. So if it's some failure that's unforeseen versus, you know, ignorance of someone just opening up a valve and, you know, there's, there's those subtlety, those differences that's worth the play, and it's all taken into account, you know, when enforcement action is like against. But you know, the, the really, really should we have our dischargers, you know, as, as regional case handlers plays into this as well? If you, and your response to a spill plays into it. So if something happens and the district is working very hard to stop it, nothing's going to come of that. You're not going to get it. You know, there's, there's some subjectivity in the Central Valley Water Board's enforcement policy. If, if someone shows zero attempt at recovering or fixing the spill and has no maintenance in plan and has no emergency response plan and lets out bams and gallons, then it's obviously something that pays the attention of the water board more than the contract. Hope for that. Is that an example of that?
Direct, direct negligence versus just an accidental.
A monthly, unanticipated.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's scheduled, it's scheduled unintended discharge.
These people here, my colleagues, know that I love to go to meetings and I went to the one in Redding because it was right close with the water control boards, Central Water Control Board. And it was interesting, there was three items on their agenda that they were working with, I'm very interested in it. I've worked with a couple of them in the past. One of them was what they call processed water at the Bakerfield area, the part of Kent County. And what it is, is from the petroleum industry. They turn out a certain amount of it. And they were trying to get it on, handle on it, and I'd worked with some of those a couple, few years ago. And they talked about that. And then the other one that was kind of interesting, they had what on pot growers, of course, they did call it pot, well, they did call it pot, but they called it cannabis growers on this type of thing. And I mean, it was very professional. That board is a five-person board, exactly like we are, they have a two-person committee and all of that. And they had two or three of the associations for pot growers that were there, Bibb and Tucker. Their background's not quite Bibb and Tucker, and they cut a lot of slack, you know. Of course, they got a thousand pot growers that were waiting out in the wings someplace out there for them. And so they had to cut a big hoop slack. And then the other one was mines, and I've done a little bit in mining. And there's 46,000-plus mines in the state of California. And there's 10,000 of them that are just horrible pollutants, you know. We got a couple of other mountains up here that I've been involved with. And, and they worked with it real good, they're very professional on this. So if we had an accident, they would cut us some slack.
Yeah, and I, our board is like, I would second that, you know, their, our board is professional. They, they take into account who they're made of, you know, they're appointed, but they also have a citizen member. They're, they're, you know, you sometimes you feel like you know which way they're going to swing on certain issues. But certainly, with the district has shown good faith, has worked, you know, diligently to eliminate the discharge and has a good track record.
They passed, they passed rules that is 1,000 square feet, pot growers, 1,000 square feet, you don't worry about, you know. And also the other interesting thing, they have some presentations there from Hubble County. And they just said, Hubble County, have at it. Of course, you've heard the story about Hubble Counties, but anyway. Now, the other question I had is more pertaining here. Would we run through this $20 million plant before we get done with it? Will we have the same quantities of dichlorobromomethane in our water and lirumum as we have now? That we would either put back through the system or whatever, you know? And I have what we have here because I have, I got from Barry, from Doug up there. He's from here, my name's Doug too, on here. And we're quite a bit over it, I've talked to Jim about this, but they actually cut us, cut, because they have what they call an interim limits and it's happened to be 3.0, and this is the dichlorobromomethane. And we were in the fours, 4.8, all of that kind of stuff as we were going on here. And in a seven-month period last fall, we had, we were in violation several of them. Have you heard from your letter you put there, are they still going to find us or are they going to let you go, Jim? You put the letter out. The 21,000.
Jeremy would like to be of a precise answer on that.
Yeah, he goes like that. But anyway, the amount that they're going to allow. But anyway, uh, the amount that they're going to allow is very minute. They would like for us to be at a one point, one point one-two. And we were at, and I'm sure that our staff is doing the best they can with this. We were at a four point eight, when that, when that was up, that type of thing. But what they've done, dichlorobromomethane is called a group two pollutant. And this is the way they do it, and they cut a twenty percent slack on that. I've used to work with pesticides, we call them category one, two, and three on here. Whereas aluminum, there was nothing on aluminum. Uh, there's, there's a group one, and they have a forty percent. So what I'm asking, when we put this through the centrifuge and the stracer and the plates and all of that, and you put a cup under there and sample the water coming out, will it have less or the amount of, same amount of dichlorobromomethane? You know?
I, we do know that as a team, but I don't have that number off the top of my head. That was part of the pilot test that we did. We actually sampled the effluent coming off this lamella plate.
Was that, was that part of the blue text, the blue text?
And we, we demonstrated.
Jim, did you jump in?
Go ahead, Jim.
Let me just, the regional board deals in parts per billion.
Parts per billion, yeah.
Drinking water folks deal in parts per million. So the amount of aluminum, dichlorobromomethane are per billion. We have it as parts per million, that's the difference. That's why it's not significant because we are drinking water. Drinking water is regulated or repeated by parts per million. They're dealing, we're dealing right now in parts per billion. Understand that's ten, a thousand little difference in concentration, is that...
Right.
With respect to...
So you're saying that they're protecting the fish?
Drinking water issue, go ahead.
They're protecting the fish more than we do, than we have to be.
Protecting single cellular organisms. Okay, we are a very resilient species. We can handle it.
I was told, I was told by a sewer person in cheap, in Oroville that if their water is cleaner than, than the drinking water you get out of the bottle at the store and that, and, and they're still in violation.
We've had staff discussions, we could drink the discharge. I mean, we're just being a little tongue in cheek, I suppose. We could drink the discharge, couldn't we? Hence the kill, you know, so...
And like, would we, would we use the water out of the Bagelia reservoir that we've been dumping back into? Theoretically, that's, that reservoir should be full of dichlorobromomethane and aluminum. And, but when you put it back through our system, you don't have to worry about the...
No, you don't.
...going back in because of parts per billion and parts...
It goes right back into the...
Not only that, but, but I've heard some recent public, we are diluting. We take that processed water, the residuals, we bring it back to the plant. We're diluting it also by about ten, ten to one factor. So not only is it this parts per billion constituent, we're, we're diluting it in raw water again. None of this in.
That's where we get our ten percent of the...
Ten percent that goes back, gets diluted again, ten to one.
I mean, ten to one.
So the parts per...
On the...
The more of attitude is...
It's kind of interesting, I've been, I have a pesticide license, all kind of stuff. I've been working with it since I was nineteen years old. And, uh, I can remember when they were able to start parts per billion. The things they found where they could test accurately for parts per billion. And now they're at parts per trillion. Now, when they can test parts per trillion, my God, it's unreal.
So that's what we're doing. That's what EPA, why would I say ECPA?
Where's EPA going?
Who, because it's technology.
It must have been just EPA, parts per trillion.
This is kind of what fueled my original question was, do we have the ability? Do we have room to have another press or whatever we choose as centrifuge in there to be able to expand the system? When we first talked, that was one of the main concerns. We do not want something that we build today but can't expand, although we're pretty much grown out as much as we can grow out in paradise. But if for some reason our water demand picked up, we have to have the ability to be able to treat that water without having to build a whole nother treatment plant, you know, on top. And so if we have that extra footprint there ready to go, then it's a matter of just piping it up and buying the machine. So, and that's what we wanna have. But we all know that the, the fish are drinking cleaner water.
Just real quick, the process design flow of your plant maximum is nineteen million gallons a day? And there's provisions to expand to twenty-three, twenty-four? Twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
To expand to twenty-five by adding another set of clarifier and filters. You have to knock down a wall to do that, but it's space available and the pipes are there to do that. But we were instructed to make sure that our plant can also accommodate that expansion to the same level, and it does.
And currently, we're, we're realistically ten to twelve million, I think, something like that, right, in summertime?
Not for a couple summers.
In a, in a, in a normal world. Not a drought ridden world.
Jim? Did I understand you right that the parts per million is the state water? That's what the state of California?
Our, our trihalomethane or discarcogens with THMs are regulated in parts per million.
Drinking water.
For drinking water.
But who regulates them parts per million?
The drinking water, the State Water Resource Control Board Drinking Water Branch.
The Drinking Water Branch, and then the, the federal one, NPDE?
Jeremy's?
Is parts per billion?
Per million.
Well, I mean, yeah.
And it may go to trillion.
It's a very good chance, but I mean, I think our criteria for the THMs is point five, six, micrograms per liter. So that's, if you wanna call it point five six parts per million or five hundred and sixty parts per billion, you know. It's a very small number, granted, uh, but it is a human health, as Jim was saying, it's a human health. It's a person, it's a trihalomethane, it's a disinfection by, byproduct. So you, you get the advantage of disinfection from water, which we all agree is very good. I mean, you need to kill the bacteria and everything else in there. But when chlorine reacts with organics and other unintended constituents, it creates these trihalomethanes. And one of those is DCPA, dichlorobromomethane. And the criteria for it is very low, point five six parts per million, um, five hundred and sixty parts per billion. It's a very low criteria.
Is that with the NPDE permit or is that with the state water?
So, so state, it's a little confusing now because the Division of Drinking Water, Department of California Department of Public Health. State Water Board, there's, there's, there's Water Board Drinking Water and there's Water Board Wastewater. If you're a drinking water plant that produces the wastewater, you're filtering backwash. So when that filter backwash water is discharged into a surface water, it's held against a criteria for dichlorobromomethane of point five six micrograms per liter.
Which is most likely cleaner than when, what came in eff, from the actual lake?
Yeah, I can't speak to that.
So now is that the NPDE permit or is that the state water? The water?
Your NPDES permit has a dichlorobromomethane after limitation.
Okay.
Point five six and...
But there's a water, drinking water, water people have a, what do they have for that byproduct?
I don't work for the Division of Drinking Water, I'm not sure, Jim, I'm not a fan as far as what their requirements are.
Drinking water.
For the, the drinking water requirements?
Drinking water, TTHMs.
For THMs, they're, they're regulated at sixty and forty, uh, sixty and eighty.
Sixty-eight, eighty of what?
They're dealing with one.
Yeah.
Three, one.
Right.
Sixteen, so that's the difference.
Eighty is a total trihalomethane.
Quite different numbers.
Well, I, I still don't understand the different, I'm a little slow sometimes.
No, it's okay. Eighty, okay, so that, you know, there's a primary MCL, a maximum contaminant level that is legislated. Eighty, I believe it's eighty micrograms per liter, I wanna say, for total trihalomethanes. That is bromiform, bromiform, chloriform, dichlorobromomethane and dibromocloromethane. It's four constituents. The sum total of those four constituents needs to be at eighty micrograms per liter or less. We're dealing with just dichlorobromomethane, which has its own maximum contaminant level, MCL, of, I believe it's point five six, don't quote me on these numbers. But, um, so trihalomethanes are a group of constituents. Dichlorobromomethane is one of those. And it's, it's one of the more potent of those, and that's why the limit is very, very low. So it's point five six out of eighty, this is dichlorobromomethane in it because it's, it's a potent carcinogen. It's, it's, it's got a lower limit than the, the sum of the group.
Now, if we had, had that, get back to it, because we're gonna close this plant up so we don't have to have an NPDES permit. And so in our drinking water, which is what we'll deliver, what does the di, does it have to be at the same level as if we have the permit?
Not for drinking.
Drinking's the eighty, right?
There's drinking water standards that are based on the California MCLs. I'm not familiar with drinking water standards, I work in wastewater, I'm drinking water side, so I don't wanna mislead you guys.
Round number eighty times what, basically what you guys wanna see?
You know, no, because it's the sum of the four. It's, it's, it's four constituents. You guys, the, the, the main concern for this district and what you're having violations of is dichlorobromomethane. It's one of several total halomethanes. And so on the drinking water side, as I understand it, they don't regulate just for that one constituent, they do...
The sum group.
They do the group. And so in that regards, there's some more flexibility on the, on the drinking water side. For wastewater discharge into Bagelia, you're, you're subject to that, pretty low limit. And it's certainly not the only discharge that has trouble with this one, it is...
Do we presently have to sample for the state water? For the water part of it, drinking water?
Oh, yeah.
And do we meet their standards, the drinking waters?
Not a problem.
Standards, okay.
Our average is right around forty, which is half of what the limit is.
Oh, okay.
And will we meet the requirements after the implementation of this?
Shouldn't change it at all.
Thank you.
Because that's...
Might even get better.
We're talking wastewater side, we're not, we're not talking what Phil produces out the, the drinking water and Jim produces out the drinking water side, that's totally different.
Well, see, the drinking water side got merged with the Central Water Authority last year. And I've been asking along, is those regulations going to change? The, the drinking water, is it gonna be more stringent, go closer to the federal standards? For any reason, I don't know what they put behind this, but he's just described it as a very bad chemical for cancer. So...
The, the standards of drinking water at the point shouldn't change. It's been more of a programmatic change. What used to be at the California Department of Public Health, drinking water is now a part of the, the water board's overall group. But the way that they're enforcing their regulations, you're dealing with maybe different people and different email addresses or something, but you're not, you're not dealing with different standards.
And all the standards...
It's wildlife that's gonna change.
All the standards start at the federal EPA level, whether it's drinking or discharge. It all starts up there and comes down.
Like Jeremy said, they, they said it, then the states devise how to, devise how to implement it and then...
Right.
And how they're gonna pursue it.
Central Valley Water Board implements the federal program for the state of California. Some states don't have their own NPDES program. The federal government implements it for them. In California, the Water Board's implementing the federal NPDES program.
Go figure. Shocker.
If you can do it in California, you can do it anywhere.
Okay.
So where were we?
Ready?
Before that conversation started.
Well, um, we're about halfway through the power plant, so, yeah, I don't wanna touch this at all. So let's, you, you go ahead.
We are, please.
All right, next one. What are we gonna do with the sludge? Remember we talked about the residual solids coming off the process? Into a sludge holding tank, which is gonna have two weeks' worth of storage. It also is a place to let this stuff settle out even more. You can decant clear water out of it, try to get that solids even thicker before it goes into the de-watering device, which is what we do here in a separate build, a building place where the existing condemned plant is. Key element is the chemical added called polymer. You're using polymer already in the head of the plant, this is a different type, different polymer, but it's very similar in terms of handling process and with respect to what the operator uses to do it.
Does this poly, does this polymer have any kind of byproducts that, once again, we have to worry about? Or is it a kind of an inert polymer that...
It's, it's like a plastic almost, it's inert.
Sure.
Forms and settles out.
So it'll go out, it'll go out with the, with the de-watering process, not come back into our water?
And then the decant water would return back to the processed water treatment system. Any water removed from the de-watering system, whether it's a press or a centrifuge, will return also to this place to be treated over again. Ultimately, the sludge, we're proposing to be exposed to landfill. That is, continues to be a topic that remains in progress with the landfill folks. So what does that mean, big picture, all that part of the process is de-watered solids going to the landfill? So it's really two parts to the process, one is the wet treatment process, the other part is the solid treatment process. Now, I told you, we went, uh, we took a trip over to Folsom. Here's a photograph of the Folsom's new facility. Behind is a, a water, the water storage tank, there's one here, another right here, you can't see. They collect this, the water in, and they decant water off once in a while. And those have got enough to run a load. They run it through the press, which is inside this building. Very simple construction building. Outside, they have the dumpster, uh, which has a canopy over top to keep the rain out. Now, the content of the dumpster is very interesting. It looks like earth. Feels like earth, actually smells better than earth. Earth hasn't, unless you kinda smell, this one didn't have any odor. At least according to my detection, with my nose. But we went out there as a group, took a look at it, asked tons of questions, and we were satisfied that this is relatively inert material. And you can see it stacks up very nicely, it's not really heavy, buddy.
What, yeah, this looks kind of dry. What's their water content?
This content of this water that, that day, they told me was somewhere on eighteen percent solids, which is eighty-two percent moisture.
Really?
Wow.
That's probably what our bodies are, isn't it?
Sure, it's a landfill, most people don't take this and they're saying, no, eighty percent. Okay, this is a sludge right here.
Just seem, seems like there oughta be some use for it.
I wanted to make a comment. Agriculture has unusual thing. You drive down the road in the spring with a working land, you can smell it. Right? Okay, there's microorganisms, other things living in it. When you don't get any smell out of a pile of dirt like this, there's probably hardly anything alive in it.
Now, their process is upstream a little bit different. They do holding pond, they let it sit in the ponds for a long time. It's a lot like the solids you can get out of the ponds you have up on hills. So it's not quite as fresh as the, the solids working with it. So maybe there will be a little bit of odor working on it.
Well, there's living organisms up in those ponds.
They, they've reported they had odor problems with their ponds and ponds. Maybe how is it, like, except for the pond, I think it'd be back to you on that?
I had the good fortune of going down to Roseville, a couple of them with Jim and Joe, as a matter of fact, was there. And they had their de-watering process, it was sort of centrifuge. And I looked at it, where we came out, it just went into a, a bin where they would turn it over with a overturned backhoe, well, forklift, you know, bin turner, we call it bin turner. And it looked just like gravel to me, felt like gravel.
This is kinda a tripartite law.
Question for you in regard to the disposition of the solids. If the landfill people hold firm and were required to somehow dry this out to a fifty percent moisture content, do we have enough, uh, uh, surface area to spread it out and let Mother Nature, uh, deal with it and dry it and still yet only then move our, our, our solids out once or twice a year? Like, could we go down to the area that we're unhappy with the capability of putting a building there? Maybe we can spread our dirt out, is there enough sunshine? Or do we have areas of the ponds or do we have an alternative plan to handle the dirt?
We would likely have to have another process, a drying process. So we couldn't just spread it on the ground. We'd probably have to have something that, um, contained it and covered it until it got to summer and we could dry it out.
How much reclamation does this represent? Was that one day's run? Was that a, was that five weeks' worth of run that they've gotten a bin there?
Running that day, I think that's all.
So that's the, that's what they got out of their one-day run?
We're, we're expecting five yards a week, something like that.
We're thinking you're gonna have one half of a dumpster a week.
One half a dumpster this side, a twenty-yard dumpster or thirty yard?
Five to six yards a week is what I guess.
What, how much is, what's a yard?
Cubic yard?
Three by three?
Three by three?
Three by three by three?
About your desk.
Not even a cord, yeah?
And when you look at the whole ton... And when you look at the total tonnage, is what the landfills work off. They work off a tonnage. The landfill, Jim and I looked at these numbers. Landfill's running around a hundred and thirty-five thousand tons a year. And we're looking at point, point two percent. Less than point two percent of that would be coming from your facility if you were able to haul your land, your sludge at.
You know, it's kind of interesting, are the landfills. I taught heavy equipment at View College for quite a number of years. In fact, this is the first semester I'm going to teach you this up. And we went actually over to the dump, yeah, the landfill, and helped them do some mining, and it was a great experience for the kids. It cost them a lot of money to dig that stuff out of there, you know, because it's all lava and the equipment and God, we, because not only my guys, but their guys were just tearing that stuff up like it was going out of style. Because it was just like digging, you know, and, so they, I would think that they would welcome getting some of this stuff for free. Yeah, soon as it starts rated, it's full of water down there.
Not so far.
But I know, what they, what they told us is that there's something called cell stability at the landfill. And the moisture, technical thing in landfills. The moisture upsets their cell stability. And they need fifty percent of it to avoid it. And they probably have operational issues that they're well aware of, so they want to avoid moisture in there.
Well, I know we did do some helping on dry, what we would do, and I've done this with agricultural projects, ammonials for one thing and, and other byproducts. You put them in windrows and then take a motor grater with a blade and you spread it back and forth on some hard ground or out at the airport and other things like that.
That works in June. That works June through August, but it doesn't work too good in December and January.
That one is raining. It just fills it right on up.
They don't cover the, the dump, do they?
They do cover the dump after.
When it rains? Plus side is our, our production of wastewater should be less during the winter time at the same time.
Well, a little bit. Get more dirt in the water that you're cleaning out too, so.
So I would imagine you'll be hearing more about this topic in the future. Today, this is very often.
Well, one last question. When we excavate our ponds now, we'll let them dry out, when we excavate that and take it down, is our moisture content, uh, less?
Fifty percent.
Still yet greater than, than twenty percent or?
Depends on the year. Some years we get it very dry, some years we have to stop it out of the pond and spread it on the ground and wait another year to try to get it dry.
Thank you.
Are we going to be able to put any of this into the ponds?
No.
No, because it would leach.
Well, no, it's, that's our emergency storage. So we fill it up. We don't have that anymore.
I was just thinking that'd be a good place to dry it out.
During the summer months.
Almond people and walnut people and people with wheat stalks and rice stalks and anything that's dry. And we eat somewhere and we mix their stuff with our stuff.
I can see the straw in there.
I, I will get out a, put out a kudo to Doug Spiker. We staff met with him and he's the local trash hauler company. And he's working hard to try and help us find a solution.
Yeah. Thank you.
So the next thing that we're challenged with is, is the decision right here. We need to decide what is it that this project is going to do? The terminology used by the SRF folks, which is your potential voluntary slumming source, by the regulatory agencies, by the environmental folks, they call it project description. From an engineer standpoint, you prepare a designer report, which describes the product. But in their terms, they call it a project description. And that's what we need to get to today. If we can confirm what the project is going to consist of, then we can issue a document called the project description to the state revolving fund folks, get that process moving forward. So what I'm going to tell you now is to define the project description. It consists of two components. One is the compliance upgrades, things you need to do in compliance with that time schedule order, okay? And then there's other things to do, which are smaller pieces of the puzzle. But while you're in there opening up the ground and doing destructive type of construction, it's a good time to get these things taken care of as well. They're, they're optional from a compliance standpoint, but determined necessary because it's the time you're right to do it. Another point here too is just the view over to the right there, you see the view of the plant from Skyway Drive. This is important because what do most people see when they drive by? Well, they're going the other direction, they see the beautiful water. Down this direction, they see the plant. Anytime you're going to do anything new in the plant, you have a lot, you know, backseat drivers asking, hey, what are you doing down there? So some of that stuff is going to stay. Some is going to get demolished and replaced with something else. But the pure fact is, it will always, it will still be a water treatment plant when we're done. We're not putting any housing or commercial or industrial. So this is going to be a water treatment plant. The, and the tank you see off to the left, you see the one tank off to the left, the white one, it's got a little tree in front of it. Yeah, that one right there. Thanks.
Yeah, run water in it.
The proposed, there's going to be two proposed tanks just behind that, a little bit to the right. So we're going to have two new tanks behind that. So from this view, you like to see one tank and a couple of them mixed with like Donald, okay? Then the key question is what color do you want to paint it? So we're going to come back to you at some point in time with that. But the view from the road is important, and we want to keep that in mind as we move forward with the project and the design.
They should be watching the roads instead of looking at the plant.
Speaking of views, Bill, this is your cue, I think. You're the one that always complains about this equalization tank down there, the storage tank for the, the dirty water. It's a rusty old tank. It doesn't have a top on it. You can see in there, it's, that's the ice.
No, I never make mention of it.
No?
No.
Somebody does.
No, I, I've never made any mention of it.
I wanted to put a helicopter.
It's been, all I understand, it's just been sitting there for years. It hasn't been used.
Well, yeah, we use it, I want to, to, where water goes before it goes up the pond. You may be thinking of the condemned plant. There's another round tank that's a little bit behind you. You can't quite see it.
The cement one, it's all. Quick question on that. Have we paid for that? Have we finished paying for that tank yet?
Pardon? Yes.
Have we fini- when did we finish paying for that one?
This year, I think.
No, we accelerated.
About it.
That's when we did it.
Three seconds.
It was a year and a half ago.
Huh?
Year and a half ago.
Year and a half ago. What was the loan we paid off so we could borrow more?
Better. That was a loan with the Department of Water Resources.
Oh, okay.
What does the compliance upgrades consist of? We have a new facility, a new waste process water storage and pumping facility. Those are the orange circles that we showed you are now squared. A new filter to waste storage, which is segregated half water, so it's clean and directly recyclable. New process water treatment plant, those are the blue rectangular areas in the top right corner of the site. New sludge storage, new already, that's what we built where they're using and then planted. And repurposing the existing water plant. The tank that has the old top, somebody commented, doesn't. The next idea is to repurpose that, repurpose that, which means either refurbishing, which means a new paint job on that stuff. Or replacing it with something else, depending on the, the integrity of that existing structure and more importantly, this foundation of that structure. We'll be taking a closer look at that in the design and what the ultimate fate of that is. Then the other plant improvements that we're talking about. You have existing hydrochloride system. That's the liquid drainage system. If you recall, not too long ago, we authorized an intro facility to replace that site, to replace gasses for liquid drainage. That was itself a regulatory compliance move. But now you have the intro facility that now are in compliance. The position, the location of that facility, not only in intro, but always intended to be moved to the new site, which is going to be next to the sludge storage. So that is like the final step in that process of going from intro to the world permanent installation. The next item is, there's cracks in it, unusual.
A, a quick question. Jim, I know I asked you to be, would we change the bleach? I asked, did that make any difference in our amount of dichlorobromine that we put out? You said it stayed approximately the same.
Gas and bleach function the same.
Yeah, as far, as far as the byproduct goes of dichloro.
Same.
So it's the same. Disregarding the safe, disregarding the safety part of it, for, which we didn't want our staff to do with the gas, but as far as the byproduct goes, it stayed the same.
We have some unusual cracking in the pavement. We go, yeah, the asphalt mix that was usual. Did you do that? And we're coming up with a remedy for that. Also, your treatable storage tank has some cracking in it that the guys at the plant have been trying to address over the years. We installed, our surveyors installed some, some monitoring devices to be able to come back over at a certain time and see how much is settling, is still settling, or if it's done settling. And then we can come up with a recommended remedy for that during construction.
Is that the cement?
How long will that process take, do you think, to, to do another measure? What's your?
A, a one-year duration is what we're doing right now. So the, the, the once field work was done, I'm going to guess.
Okay, so we may, we may come back in, in another year and need to do some support work in that form of doing it.
That's right. There'll be some sort of subterranean reinforcement of the foundation.
Yeah.
And we're going to leave it to the contracts.
And it's going to stop us proceeding along with this. Thank you.
It's a remedy that'll be decided at that time. Okay, so, um, let's see where I'm at. Next one. Adjust plant water system. It's a nice way of saying, you've got a small problem with your plant water system. During low flow conditions, which you're getting a lot more of these days, there's not enough suction pressure on the pump speed in the plant water supply. I mean, water is being used with the process for various reasons. So I, the solution is one of the different deep lines that particular pump installed, the problem that's included in here. Water rights to Little Butte Creek. This is a, a legacy issue that requires that you maintain at least a half a CFS flow every, every day continuously twenty-four seven going to the creek. When it was initially installed, the guys tell me that they put it in as an intro facility. If you look at it today, it's a piece of PVC pipe laying on the ground. It's got some paper on it where it's broken a few times. It was intended to be only a one or two year solution with a permit to be going in later. Well, that was a long time ago. Now it's time to open that permit facility in there.
That's the miracle of duct tape.
Do we absolutely have to replace that? No, really. Do we? By rule or anything?
I'll, I'll address them all when he's done. Explain them all. I'll go through what is absolutes and what are options.
If you haven't gathered, I'm a very frugal person and, and I, I idea just, I see all this and I deal with farmers and so what? It gets water down there and it's paid for.
They broke it.
Yep, fix it.
Not yet.
Right.
Okay, the next one is, uh, there is a plan to put a new pump station on the treatment plant that will pump water up to reservoir A. You call it some A reservoir. But it needs pumped to get it up there. And the plan is to put those pumps within the site, pipe it off the site, and get it out to where it needs to go.
Where, where's pump? Is that the storage tank down in the system?
Yeah, there's a tank called your treatable water storage tank. And the intent is to put a, a series of pumps that will pump water out of that tank.
Is that behind Eldorado?
Where's it going to?
Yeah.
It, it, the.
I thought I was thinking A, A's.
A zone.
Eldorado.
A zone.
Right up the top where we have problems with water pressure now? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, that's, that's not its purpose. The purpose is right now, if we lose the forty-two going to town, we've got nothing for the town. Landslide, earthquake, whatever. The number one purpose of this A-zone, uh, side pump is to get redundancy to our distribution system. So this would start, this would get it out of the, the plant area, so if we decided to proceed with that project, we're not digging back up in the plant again. And we would run a sixteen inch line up Skyway and tie into town. And that way, if we had a catastrophic event, then we have at least enough water to provide our citizens with indoor drinking water.
This is the bladder tank? Butter? No?
This is the metal one that, behind Eldorado.
The one we just, yeah, the one we just rehabbed.
The one up on the hill by the Mobile Home Park.
Oh, okay.
Above the optimal or?
Have we ever had a failure of the main line?
The forty-two inch?
Yeah.
So we've had issues with it in the past, but we're talking, this is long-term, big emergency plan.
No, but I don't know of any earthquakes in parallel.
That, that, my job is to bring up issues to the board. I'm not going to argue with you. If the board doesn't want to do that, that's fine. It's all about emergency planning.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out why, yeah, what you're doing to justify it.
We're justifying making sure we have an alternative slot, supply to our residents in the event of an emergency. That's, that's the purpose of the project.
Well, that's basically, will there be a pump installed there or will it just be stubbed out for a pump?
All that would be included in this project would be yard piping, underground piping, says underground utilities, and maybe some underground electrical conduit. Replace, or maybe even just sleeves for future stuff that's going to come in. A comedy, so that when you do get ready to build this, if you choose to build it, there are some provisions to be able to do that.
So basically, all you'd have to do is bring the pump in and bolt it up.
No.
Put a different flag on it.
You'd have to do a complete system. But we're going to lay out the other yard piping so that you can get it through the spaghetti without any problem.
Oh, okay.
The, the idea would be to install it while it's all torn up, rather than coming in and finishing it, pay it and then tearing it up again.
Why, why wouldn't it be wise, because I've helped with a couple of these kind of projects other places, where they would be just stubbed out? You know, you go through all the maze of pipes and all of that.
That's what we're doing. That's what this is.
And stubbed out, and so you come back in and you just unbolt the flanges and around it, bolt your pipe up to it.
It's not as simple as that, but, but that's what we're doing. We're just stubbing it out, so we're getting the pipe in the tough areas.
One of the first presentations that I had the pleasure of hearing when I got on the board, been on the board now three years, uh, was from Jim and Bill. And they pitched that A pipe zone, you know? I thought we should start it the very next day because they put it across exactly like you did because of the fact that low pressure and all of these types of things in the A zone. You know, we had a big fire up there. Somebody'd be sucking swamp water, or they'd be trying to find some swamp, swamp water to suck.
Yeah, it has side benefits. It has better pressure, it has better flow rates, it has multiple other benefits that we'll pitch to you when we take the next phase of this approach. But right now, the main thing is you get the pipe in the ground at the lowest cost possible if you do it right now.
Yeah, well, this would do it. It would be way beyond the present construction site.
Yes.
Not bother the pavement or any of that kind of stuff. Good thinking.
So in a nutshell, it's only the work within the compliance treatment plant site. We would stub it out at the property. You know, the site, the site down, you know, go ahead and further than that.
Yeah, wherever they would hook up to it. It's at the boundary, right at the boundary or whatever.
And then you would take a longer line to get it out to your.
So that's all. That was about a two and a half million dollar project or something like that. I got it written down in my notes.
The whole thing? Yeah, I don't remember the number.
I think it was about a two and a half million.
But if, if we go down this list, if you're ready for me.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
This, this is put in other improvements. It's not a compliance upgrade, but it's not an option. Because right now, these are sitting where the chlorine building is, and it has to be moved. So it's a, it's another, another component, but this, whenever you see the expenses for this, it's not really optional. We can't do the, the compliance upgrades without doing that. These are optional as well, adjusting the plant water system. If you didn't want to proceed with this solution, we have some alternatives, but none we recommend. Uh, the hydro pneumatic tank would have to be replaced if we don't go with this route. We've got concerns with our insurance carrier on that. So, um, we, we have alternatives, but this is still an option. This is definitely an optional project. Um, we can continue to operate that the same way we're doing it.
What's the estimated cost of that option?
This one?
Yeah, that, we're talking about the water rights to Little Butte Creek?
I'll defer that to ACOM.
That one was like thirty-eight or thirty-seven thousand?
Eight, no, thousand, no.
Eighty-eight thousand.
Yeah, there's a table in your report.
I have down here eighty-eight thousand. Well, would it, what, if that thing, could that fail, fail?
Page one point four.
Could it, if we don't fix it, could it fail and cost more?
Eighty-eight thousand is what it is.
No, it won't cost more if it fails. Uh, what happens is, the big thing is, is it's run downstream. Because if we release water right at the dam, it messes with all of our wears that we measured dam leakage with. So that's why the piping's there. If it leaks, those readings. If it leaks, those readings will be off a little bit, we'll Band-Aid it up and we'll make note of it. So, it, it's not, it's kinda off to the side, so it's not like it's something that if we were to dig it later, it's really gonna be in the way of anything.
The only issue is we don't have to do the whole entire thing, but we do have to move where the tap is.
Oh, yeah.
Because the second we introduce recycled water to our water line, it can come out through this line.
Yeah, so there's still some expense. I forgot about that.
Well, actually, I didn't realize...
Not optional.
I didn't realize it to this year. But not eighty-eight thousand, right? We're, we're not passing water from the Magalia reservoir to Little Butte Creek per se. We're actually taking raw water that comes through the bypass and down through the plant and then, while water goes out in there, so we're not... Because I was wondering about the D, the roll out of the good stuff, you know? So, actually, we're just bypassing a little water from Paradiseville Lake through the plant, right?
It's whatever water we're running through the plant at that time.
Which could be Magalian, could be not.
Could be Magalian, could be Paradise.
Right.
Whatever our source of water is at that time, that's what's going on.
Do we do more than what we're supposed to because of the dam leakage? Doesn't the dam leak a lot too?
Well, I wouldn't say a lot.
Well, a lot, lot, a lot more than we want.
But we don't subtract the leakage from a half CFS.
You don't?
No.
Right, so it does, so we do give more than that, than they're supposed to get. So, the environmentalists didn't change anything.
But that's wicking down into the ground, that's not...
Yeah, we don't know that more is flowing down.
That's not surface water.
I know. Well, it's surface water, which not, it doesn't got the chemi, the chemicals for...
I mean, it's not on the surface where it's wicking.
Just regular water.
Yep, yeah. It's wicking down through the...
Rerouting the 42-inch water, raw water main, this takes that away from crossing the creek on those two large ancient concrete pillars.
Gets rid of that.
And then, and we highly recommend we proceed with that. Future Zone A pumping, sure it's an option, but you're gonna pay through the nose when you actually try to do it down the road. If you do it all, otherwise, we've really worked with AECOM to only do the minimum there. And then remove and replace the existing EQ tank. That's a pay me now or pay me later. If you got a contractor there, it's fine. It has been in place for a long time and eventually it'll have to be replaced either now or later.
I mean, that's the photo in the right corner. If you slide down, that's that one corner.
Oh, that's the one that doesn't have a top?
Back to you. So, you can see on the, in the table, in the report, Table 1-1 on page 1-4, it lists the costs for these different elements of the project. But that's not all, guys. We've got a couple more things. As we work through the process with the plant operations staff, we identified some additional requirements that need to be taken care of through the design process. One is you've got an A obsolete, computerized control system for the plant. I'm not sure how old that piece of equipment you're looking at trying to do it is, but probably not as old as it's done at the water treatment plant.
We upgraded this SCADA system.
Seven years ago.
Seven years ago?
Was it seven years ago?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's out of date?
Which, like digital terms was like a million years ago.
They're out of date for six months. Bill, it's a personal computer. It's just like we're...
This isn't the entire SCADA system. This is the PCs that run it. They're working on Microsoft 97.
Yeah, something like that.
Which they don't even support anymore.
Oh, really?
And so, it's upgrading all the software in the PC.
It's the computers and the software that runs on the computer.
Why, why can't the district do that ourselves?
As part of the appliance upgrades project, we're gonna be adding some additional processes to the system. At that time, you will be hiring an integrator to go ahead and add these new processes to your control and monitoring system. You're gonna have to go in and modify the existing software, using this software, using the existing software, modify the operating control screens that the operators use to interface with the plant operating equipment. Is there a problem with that? Yes, because some of the equipment that's being done now and the software that's being used today is not the same software you have out there now. So, it's, the time is now to upgrade that software so that we can get it done in the most current version of the software. All the integrators don't work in software that's eight years old. They work in stuff that's today or a few years ago. So, the idea is get your software up to speed with the current standard, give yourself another eight years of life in your programming, and upgrade the PCs to give yourself some more life in your SCADA system. The good news is that you have equipment out there that is very hardy, very durable and rugged. These are the programmable logic controllers, DLCs we call them. And they're produced by a very reputable company called Allen Bradley. You can still get parts for these things. You can still replace these. These are big workforces of industry throughout the country, okay? And everywhere else you work for that kind of stuff. Those don't have to be replaced. Those are rock solid, still good equipment and will be for some years to come. It's the, the weaker parts are the PCs and the software that we're recommending that you upgrade that.
Well, we have a PC specialist on staff. Is it something that she could work with, the supplier of the software and upgrade this thing?
We're talking hardware, aren't we?
Yeah, it's hardware, but...
Dot software.
Software runs...
The reason we're talking about integrating it is because our, and this is key to their whole design process. We have to treat water every day through this whole construction process. And timing all these components will be very important, and this is a good example of it. If you include the SCADA computers and software upgrade, they can bring in the new computers, they can program everything sitting next to the existing ones, make sure everything's aligned up. And then they can take one of them, unplug ours, plug theirs in, make sure it's working. If there's hiccups, they unplug theirs, they put the other one back in, we're back online treating water. So, that there's benefits to doing it at the same time.
And how much other, you don't have a price on that?
No, that's actually gonna be able to be included into the services that we're providing. And it's pretty much incidental to the construction contract cost. You're looking at a, over a, over 10 million dollars. This will be incidental to that cost.
It'll be included?
Yes, in the, in our estimate, in our estimate.
In writing.
Okay. The next item is you have an existing cathodic protection system that is protecting the steel pipes that you see exposed out there. And there's a, a field with buried catos connected electronically to the pipe to protect against corrosion.
We just upgraded that, I thought. I thought we just fixed that.
Not at the plant.
Not at the plant.
Not at the plant.
That was on the 42-inch main, yeah.
The 42-inch, it goes across the creek, hasn't that been upgraded?
It's from the mag meter down to town is what we upgraded.
So, around the processing plant, we don't have, we haven't changed the diode, whatever they're called and some...
Catos.
Catos, okay.
So, this particular item would be, it's two parts really. One is to revisit the system you have out there. Now, apparently, there are a couple of continuity issues with some of the test pops that are located throughout the system and check for continuity of the system. They're showing some discontinuity that needs some troubleshooting to fix that. So, that's one thing. Fix what you've got. And then, if you choose to add the item on the previous page, which was the reroute the 42-inch raw water main, then you're adding new steel pipe to the system, which would also be required to be added to the existing cathodic...
Forty-two inch main, if we just replace the pillars underneath it and put in your catos, would the system still work?
Sure.
It won't protect anything above ground, no. Climate protection doesn't protect anything above...
Oh, okay, so you don't need it above ground then?
It's everything under ground, it plays under there.
It's just for anything that's underground. Thank you. Jason. So, we, we don't, if we don't run that pipe above ground and we just replace the pillars, we could save some money there?
Replace the pillars, it's cost money too.
Well, I know, but I don't think it's gonna cost what...
And the piece of pipe's 1950s.
Yeah, no, it's...
Well, it's also not as long as a new pipe would be.
There was also a certain risk factor associated with the crossing through the creek. That when you have the big deluge coming down from the overflow and the release of water from the dam, the water level gets very close, if not right at that pipe. Is that something you wanna...
Well, it, it hasn't failed all these years.
Oh, yeah.
So, the, the thing was that we didn't, I know when they drilled the holes through those things, they didn't find any rod in it. And the idea was just to put something in there that was stronger, but it, it has never, as far as I know, been in danger, directly endangered flood. We have 100-inch rainfall years up there at the reservoir.
So, we wanna put in 2015 pillars and leave the 1950 pipe?
No, you replace the pipe.
Well, that's what they're, that's what he's talking about now.
No, no, they're talking about a longer pipe.
We're talking about rerouting it.
Rerouting, I know, exactly.
New alignment.
Yeah.
We looked at, we looked at that as an option. That was discussed. This was the preferred alternative.
Better solution.
If you replace the pillars, you're likely looking at an Army Corps permit and a stream bed alteration permit. With our current solution, those aren't likely, if they are, they're very minimal. I don't, are we even looking at a likely, either of those permits? I didn't think so. So, those are huge costs, huge processes to go through when you put a pillar right in a waterway. So, those are all considered.
Working on replacing an existing pillar that's been there all this time? You taking on short...
You still have, you still have the process.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't seem like it'd be a great deal of a problem after all. You're not changing things.
When were the pillars put in?
Yeah, the state's so easy to deal with, so I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure you just walked down to the counter and picked that permit up, you know, 15 minutes or so.
Well, they're no younger than 54, they could be older.
And the laws have changed completely since, from the last...
But no, it's just, if you do anything in that creek bed, it, those permits are not simple to get. They take a lot of time.
So, whether we do that steel, extra steel pipe or not is really up to you. But you have an existing cathodic protection system that has some issues that you can address. We'll take care of that here. Last two items on this list, hopefully get through with you guys, is, one is an easy one. The new tanks, you wanna paint them the same color as the old tanks or maybe paint the old tank the same color as the new tanks, whatever. Just make sure we paint that old tank at the same time. Just let me repaint the existing tank to match the new one.
Is that the old, the one that has no top on it you're talking about painting?
Has the white top on it.
The raw water storage tank.
The one you see as you drive by.
Right, not the one that has no top on it? That's gonna be demolished.
Well, no, that's either going to be replaced or refurbished.
Okay.
And then that would also be repainted as well. The last one's an interesting one is the, the area of the proposed work has a species of tree called, it has cypress. It grows in soils called serpentine rock. And you have some of that all over California in different pockets, but this particular site has some right where we're proposing to build this particular facility. It's sort of a shrubby kind of tree. It's not really a big tree. It's sort of low and spreads out. And it's in this general vicinity of the plant. You can see we've got a couple of big circles and some small rectangles there, supposedly in that area. So, this is going to, now let's put it this way, McNabb cypress, I'm not an expert on this by any means, and that's why we have other people here to answer your questions. But McNabb cypress is a, is a, an interesting species. It's not everywhere because it only grows and thrives in this particular type of soil condition. It's not necessarily the cypress itself that's of interest to conservation, but also the, the, the community of plants and animals that live around it. It also is indicative of special serpentine soil conditions and the minerals that are available for their upgrowth in that area. So, it could be something that needs some attention from an environmental standpoint. It separates this from being a totally vanilla-type of project with no environmental issues. We anticipate there will be some sort of mitigation required with this. We are prepared to mobilize our crew of biologists and, and environmentalists to go out and take a look at that area in more detail. Not just that area, but also the area in and around the plant, including other land that the district owns. To see where all the other McNabb cypress areas are. Are there some McNabb cypress areas that have already been altered for some reason? Maybe there are candidates to transplant some of these into, into another area. Who, who knows? Maybe when we go out and look at this vicinity of the McNabb cypress, our, our biologist determined that, oh, this area's already been so severely altered by previous activities that it doesn't have a lot of value anymore as a community of birds and animals and plants that live in and around it. So, it's a low-value cypress area. Or it could be considered, oh, it's totally pristine, like the bottom of the parts are your cashmere, pristine. Maybe if that determination, we take out a few of those trees in the process, then maybe the cost for replacing those trees from a mitigation standpoint could be greater. And we'll be looking at mitigation off-site, either up the hill. Another area, another consideration that could happen here too is that after we go take a look at it and we know the extent of your land that you own, maybe there's a pocket of the same type of trees that is in very good condition. That the, would be acceptable to just put a line around those in the surveying term, drawing up, draw up some sort of a conservation easement or a deed saying, this area's gonna be preserved in perpetuity, never to be touched again because it's a special type of vegetation. And we'll do that in exchange for letting us tear out some of these McNabb cypress down here in the plant. So, those are some of the options, either you're planting and restoring something that's already been altered somewhere else, or preserve something that's already buried in good condition. Or it could be nothing at all depending on the character of that particular area that we're going to be disturbing associated with the project.
Don't we have that already across the Skyway?
How about asbestos?
The question is about asbestos. Yeah. The serpentine rock is, has naturally occurring asbestos. During excavation, which we anticipate to be a combination of chiseling, okay? Rock, chiseling the rock out, it will generate some dust. There's gotta be provisions for the contractor to control dust. And then the material itself will have to be handled a certain way, covered in plastic. There's certain procedures that are very clearly defined. You're not the only project in California that's done this before. So, there are very clear standards on what to do. Contractors know how to do this and it'll be managed appropriately.
And it'll be very, very expensive. So, asbestos goes up above the road into it and it's up there, it actually goes back, back up against one of our ponds. When they developed the pond, they went over and just far enough out, but there's a wall on one side that is, is serpentine rock. But they went a farther enough away that they're digging in dirt there in the pond and can be maintained. There's no asbestos thing to pollute the water. But you're talking about, and this is a real soft rock. This is not a hard rock. You can find up in the hills where people have been mining asbestos for years to take it home. Part of my driveway years ago was asbestos rock. We used to use, or serpentine. We didn't realize what it was as far as a health hazard. But that's a, that's not an easy rock to work with. I thought it was either gonna be lava cap or asbestos because where you have it on the map, lava cap is right in there with the asbestos. They come and go right in that area. I've walked all over it. And the McNabb cypress is on the hillside there and so forth. We have other lands in the district that are forest lands that asbestos, which is in about four miles or five miles from where this is. Yeah, this is like a little hill there. For, I don't think any of it's owned by the district, but it's Forest Service land.
Oh, I see.
And the pine trees and everything on it is particular to serpentine rock. The grasses, everything in it, not so much the wildlife. But that, that's not, that's not a casual thing. That's gonna be a very expensive thing because you have to get, I would think you wanna get to some hard rock somewhere to base those buildings on. And you can't use serpentine as a foundation stone, I don't think. Very soft.
You, you actually can't. You just have to protect it through the weather.
Yeah, keep the rain out of it and everything else, but it...
So, if we put a foundation over that cap and processing that naturally occurring asbestos is a common process in the industry these days. For example, Lost Creek Dam, we're rehabbing that, that entire right button that that dam is exposed.
Is serpentine?
Yeah. And the tunnel lock that came out of the Lost Creek Tunnel, we're using, we had an assay to determine the content and the percentage. And we're able to crush that and use it as road base.
Really?
So, it, it really is dependent on the quality of the rock. So, it really is dependent on the quality of rock and the content of the asbestos.
Yeah, actually on the site.
Right, right.
So, you'd have to do some studies on that and dig?
Testing testing, yeah.
Yeah, and drill some holes to see how deep it is.
And typically, we would incorporate the regulatory framework in the specifications so the contractor knows beforehand what kind of respiratory-type equipment these people need to have, whether it's just they have to water when they're doing their demo. If it's soft rock, they can rip it, but they probably have to wet it when they're doing it so they limit the airborne component of it.
So, we have to go through government agencies to see if we can actually tear the place up first, tear the serpentine out?
No, I don't, no, I don't.
We're not going to have to do anything?
No, we just have to manage the byproduct of the action.
And I'd like to remind the board that AECOM successfully did that with the bypass project. We had all of the asbestos issues related in the specs. There was excavation in asbestos. There was pipe foundations placed on asbestos rock. These guys know how to handle it, and they did it for us already.
Did they actually put the pipeline on some asbestos ground?
Yeah, there was some asbestos on the footings right by the crossing where it crossed over to the raw water storage tank.
Yeah, that's where asbestos is, would be there, but not of the rest of the pipeline.
When they excavated, they had to place the pipe in bedrock through the saddle dam. And so, when it came through the saddle dam, that's where they were dealing with asbestos.
Okay.
It's a common...it's a very common problem throughout Northern California, but throughout California generally, specifically in this area of California. You run into it all the time. And we have standard protocols and specifications for contractors.
And the question is, how much more money does it cost to work with that kind of ground? Is it going to be the same as any other earth movement?
It will definitely be more expensive, but that's not a huge footprint. It's very manageable.
But it's more expensive?
Is it based in the estimations we have here?
Yes, it's anticipated. And as Carl began into the cost aspect of it, the contingencies that are currently being used as part of that estimate to anticipate, first of all, we're quantifying the components of the plant construction, but we're also using current costs to update what the better-refined layout is generating in terms of quantities and units and that sort of thing. So, maybe if you go ahead and dive into that part of it.
Yeah, just to wrap, go ahead.
I'd like to ask one question. This is not a...doesn't seem to be a real important question. I was reading through here about the vegetation, the little plants that may or may not live around this McNabb cypress that we'd have to be careful of. And you indicated that there's a couple times a year that we would have to be searching for them. And I think it was in the spring and in the summer. Well, our anticipated timeline is to be letting contracts out and getting our bids with what, with construction starting on January 1st or starting in July? So, I'm just wondering if we're talking about, is this going to be a delay? Or how would we handle that, whether we know we have to deal with those little plants or not?
This may be a good time for Jeff to speak to that with respect to how you find these plants and then the impact this gives.
Sure.
Either way, what you're talking about.
Well, the strategy would be to first have some botanists go out and characterize the resource a little more closely than they had an opportunity before, which you had mentioned, getting them going soon if possible. And if they decide that that is a resource that is protected under CEQA, where it's addressed, it's not a state or federally listed resource specifically. The concept and strategy for CEQA is to allow the project to move forward and for the board to, you know, adopt mitigating negative declaration, things like that, would be to develop a mitigation plan of conducting a survey for the rare plants during the gloomy times, which is usually in the spring or early summer, and having language of if those plants are found, then to implement some sort of a mitigation plan, which is still, you know, would need to be developed. First, the first step again is to characterize the resource adoption present and meet that criteria of being a special community, you know, in the particular project. So, if it is not a delay, do you approve on start? Go ahead.
I just...McNabb cypress is on this site. I can take you to half a dozen other sites, and there's no McNabb cypress. It's serpentine, but it doesn't have any McNabb. Years ago, when I took an ecology class, we studied this McNabb cypress site, and it was the closest, easiest one to get to. So, at least in the people in the community that do botanical work, this site is well-known. But the thing still is the same. If you go...I don't know if on the Forest Service land close by, there's any McNabb cypress. I know if you go another direction across the Feather River and up to McNabb...oh, Cypr... I'm sorry, up to Serpentine Rock, you will find no McNabb cypress. You will find some grasses there that don't grow at this site. So, it's not a simple thing. It's very complex.
Sure. So, to that effect, as Carl was mentioning earlier, part of what our botanists would like to do is to evaluate what the characteristics and the quality of the particular footprint that would be disturbed, where the McNabb cypress occur. And then to look at other properties that the district owns would be ideal, such as across the road, there's more McNabb cypress there. So, look for, you know, potential areas where there could be restoration or some kind of permanent conservation location.
I wouldn't be surprised if you ended up having to move something.
Yeah, and that could be...
Just away from that, putting it somewhere inside the footprint.
Yeah, and so, it's really dependent on the first step of kind of evaluating the quality of the resource right where the footprint of the project would be.
Well, considering the politics, we have Atachico and environmental movements is so strong in this area. See what happens.
Yeah, but again, the idea is to develop defensible mitigation measures through CEQA to allow the adoption of mitigating negative declaration as shown in the schedule, and just have mitigation related to the surveys during the gloomy time, and then having a mitigation plan that's in place that's adequate enough for CEQA compliance that, you know, if the other rare plants are found, the mitigation plan could be implemented. A lot of times it's salvaging, you know, if there's specific individual plants that are also found other than the cypress, and salvaging those and moving those to another location, things like that.
When you're up there looking around, the Megalia sign is on the other side of the skyway from the water treatment plant. And that whole hill back there doesn't have very many cypress. I've got to go look again. How...the reason that is bare, in the 40s, 50s, I was hauling rock and gravel and all kinds of stuff, but there was an old guy that was mining up there, and he dozed them all out. This was at the end of the 40s, right after World War II. And so, that's why there's not growing up there, if you look at it. And we hauled rock out of there for a long time. We found out the, you know, serp...serpentine, we call it serp. Serpentine is a talc, really is, most of them, and these are all grades of, like you were talking about, Tom. And it doesn't make the world worth a damn because it'll just grind up there. There's no binder in it, you know, the way we do AB three-quarter, all that, three-quarter AB, all that. And it's a beautiful rock. It's also the state rock, too. I don't know if that makes any difference or not, but it's a beautiful rock, but it's... I think the old boy, Eli was working for him, the old boy that had me dozing out those because I have cypress, he's passed on now.
But again, the question about impact and schedule, we would evaluate that early and make sure that it's incorporated in the estimate so that we keep up to date with what we're doing and whether or not there would be an impact to actually the start of construction. If there is, and it has something to do with the regulatory format or permitting issue of the time order, then we get back with the agency and let them know and get that during the working so that we don't forget how to comply with those work.
But it sounds like we're going to handle it with a, if this happens?
Yes.
Then this is our proposal and get that approved upfront.
Yeah, and it should go very quickly. I mean, it's not that we're working in a vacuum here, that we do have experience in this area with this type of resource, and we've got the specialists on staff to give a hand.
Okay, thank you.
That's why we chose you.
I'd like to bring up one other issue about trees. We have proposing some pipelines along the south line of the project, which is a smoking wooded area, but these are mostly evergreen type of trees. He's showing you the line right along the fence there.
Very good left-handed.
Just outside of the fence from the road.
Right there?
About there, and then go down and then cut down to the degree ten. So, that line there has trees. And they're good-sized trees, but, you know. But we have to clear probably some of those out of the way to make them for a pipeline to clear it through there. So, I asked Jeff, you know, what do we need to do to be able to remove trees for construction along that line? And he reminded me about the migratory bird nesting season. It's an important window of time that you're not supposed to touch any trees. And if you do have to do something with the tree, then you have to go through a lot of pre-tree-cutting observations over a long period of time to verify if it's going to be more likely to trees. Now, Jeff's here, he can talk more about that. But the window of time, I understand, is from February 1st to August 1st. No tree cutting during that migratory bird nesting season. After August 1st, then you can cut them down without any issues with respect to bird nesting. Can you correct me on that, Jeff, or am I?
That's basically it. You know, that federal law protects...it's causing an active nest to fail. So, the...if you want to do the work that, you know, cutting down the trees, for instance, during that nesting season, the standard measures that are used, you know, throughout most of the country are doing pre-construction surveys with a...by biologists, looking for active nests, and then coordinating with the regulatory entity, which in California is Department of Fish and Wildlife, who's authorized to protect the migratory birds, the nesting birds, to have measures in place to ensure that those nests are not disturbed. So, it could be having...so, actually, it's the nests that could be in trees that are being cut. And there's certain birds, like raptors, that are sensitive to new large noises that have a burrow. So, it's monitoring those nests and ensuring that the, you know, setting in probably some measures to make sure that the nests aren't abandoned is the concern. But again, if you're doing the work outside of the breeding season, then that's not it. A law that really needs to be attended to.
So, one thing I might add, and that is the typical process that we go through in terms of anticipating these types of impacts. So, if we stay within the regulatory framework and we meet the requirements governing those resources is that we would anticipate this, we look at when our construction schedule is, and if it's necessary, a year before, we go in and take out trees in that footprint within the timeline that works so that we don't impair the progress of the construction schedule.
Right.
That's just the basic end construction. Yeah, just you've got to be paying attention to that, what he's talking about, right up front and planning for it so that you, you know, you make the best of the time you got.
So, you cut all the trees down after August, right?
That's the general idea.
Are you aware of the forestry plan we have with the NRCS and the Beaufort County RCD made? Do you have a copy of that?
I'm not aware of that specifically, but I'll make a note of that.
Yes, we have. I'm sure George can get you a copy of it.
Okay.
Do you like the...have to harvest plants and take them straight?
No, it's talking about managing the forest.
That might not relate...that might not relate to the treatment plant, though, as much as it does.
There's some discussion about migratory birds and stuff.
Yeah, the things you're talking about are included in there, osprey, the eagle, and so forth.
Sure. You know, the...basically, any bird during the nesting season in California is considered migratory. But specific to timberhoppers planning, this, to me, with that in us, it's a timber harvest area. I would see that being an issue.
Yeah, it's a small, small, you're talking about a very small thing?
Yeah, and you're not permanently removing any.
No, I understand. What I was saying, you have a resource that this district paid to have a plan made up for our forest. And it has wildlife, and it has thinnings, and all sorts of information, and soils. So, we paid for it, the resources there, it should benefit from your work.
Appreciate that.
So, that summarized concludes the project description portion of the presentation. Now, we're going to get into schedule. The text chart is impossible to read, as you see, it's too small. But what it basically is showing is the bottom line is the State Water Board's full compliance date on January 1, 2018, and that shows up at this little diamond down here with a one slash wall. Go backwards from there, the next line up is the construction period. We're showing it could be 15 months. It could be longer than that. Like now, we're estimating 15. And our schedule is allowing a little bit of float back here to make up for any things that come along the way that could be a risk. We're just always thinking about this project. So, we feel that's a good risk management approach to scheduling. But I'm going to just basically summarize this and say, right now, we're on schedule with compliance deadline. Let's take a look at the next steps involved here. The next steps involve focus on where we are today. This gap chart, this is right here. It shows that we're nearing completion of preliminary design report, which kind of leads into the CEQA environmental services work to begin and start the final design process. Now, I want to take a closer look at the CEQA environmental services in this area. Give you a blow-up of this figure so it's easier to read. And we are ready to start on these immediately following the action today. So, this is the same information on the other chart, just blown up. Now, Kevin, I'm going to ask you to follow me here on this. Halfway down is the CEQA environment services, and it's broken down into four activities that will be implemented sequentially in this game. The first one is what we talked about today, project description. With your approval today, we will move forward with finalizing that so it can be submitted to the regulatory folks as a preliminary design report. The next step up is the acronym IS/NND, initial study mitigated negative declaration. Basically, it's the environment study, the CEQA study that Jeff will be charged on. And we're looking at including in that process, what are we going to do with the McNabb cypress? Well, we can't sample and analyze the flora and fauna around the tree in its own spring. So, we've got to finish by January. How are we going to do that, Carl? Okay, the beautiful thing is that in the head, this day over here has a little float. We have to put on a little bit more if we can, but we don't have to have that many so we're ready to give the project a chance. The process, though, we don't want to wait too long because there's other steps involved here. Circulate the draft initial study for publication with public comment. When it comes out of that, it's sometimes an uncertainty. We have to be ready for anything at that point. It could cause to lose the project. We don't anticipate it, although it could. Then, once that circulation period is over, we come back to you and ask you, school members, to adopt the initial study and the proposed mitigation plan, which is NMD, as a form of responsibility you approve to take.
I'm a slow learner, but so...to me, you went fast. In other words, if we approve what's on the agenda today, what does that mean?
That means you will be able to keep your design team and project team on schedule to make your compliance deadline at the state's open night.
Okay, is that going to cost us any more money?
If you delay it?
No, if we approve it, does it cost us more money?
Yes, the last part of the action today is a proposed amendment for engineering services that will increase the cost of engineering services.
And this is above the million-dollar contract? This is basically another contract?
No, it's the same contract being amended.
Being amended for another $400 and...
The redefined spoken word is that... The redefined scope award is there.
And how soon do you need to get paid?
We're ready to start immediately.
No, no. The question is, when do you get paid? In 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, or at the end of your time?
I'm not familiar enough with the, I'm trying to go through.
If you pay incremental with the progress of the work, you wouldn't be ready to check the day for four thousand dollars?
Progression.
Or at the end of the month for that.
Yeah, they bill us every month for the work they complete.
September 30th, we have paid you $378,000 plus dollars, $269,000. And we have $659,972 left. And Tom, I'm gonna nail you right now.
Here it comes.
Because I told you I was gonna do that.
Does that guide you? Does that guide you to get others, Tom?
Back, go back to day one. I asked you this very question. It was $1,038,000. And I said, Tom, are you sure that's what you're gonna be able to put this across that? And what did you tell me?
And I told you, we stick with the scope and the fee that we have on that paper, and yes, sir, that is fact.
Fact, okay. Well, you missed it by sixty, you missed it by sixty percent. Because that's the first time we heard about it, because now.
Listen to what he says.
I'm listening, I'm listening closely, very closely.
You did.
When, when we change the scope, there's a substantive possibility that we change the fees.
I had no idea that we changed the scope.
We're not, we're talking about that.
Nobody told me anything about changing the scope.
That's what we're talking about today.
That's what we're doing today.
Okay, well, then, good, okay.
So I think if we, if, if I truly, Doug, I showed up tonight, because I knew that question.
You knew it was coming, did you? Okay.
You still showed up?
Yeah.
Well, anyway, anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, I just, okay, changing the scope, I'll buy that. We're asking you to do more work, right?
Right.
Okay, we're asking you to do sixty percent more work, because that's what we were off.
I think there's, I think we should.
Okay, right, he's shaking his head on here.
I think we should hold judgment until Carl's done with his presentation, because I think there'll be some illumination of the value that you're gonna get for this additional.
Okay, I'm glad that you showed up, because if you hadn't, I'd have really been down to the jaw, because I couldn't nail you.
Okay.
So.
Carl and Jeff are glad he showed up, is what it really boils down to.
It's good natured, because I don't.
Yeah.
So, back to the environment is the next several steps that will need to be taken. And with this logical sequence, we'll be coming back to see you again soon on this one. And we can come back sooner than that, if you'd like to. But we do have a plan where we will circulate this information, go out to the public, receive public comment. Who knows? Your phone might start ringing at that point, I don't know. But there is a day when we send this out for public comment.
How's that done? How do you do it?
It's circulated by doing, I think, an advertisement.
Yeah, it's a, it's a notice of intent to prepare the document that's circulated. It goes to the state clearinghouse, goes to interested stakeholders that have requested notice. It'll be something you adopt, so it'll be in your agenda packet. It's, it'll be publicized in accordance with the law. And then that 30-day period is when, basically, a public comment period, you'll come back, it'll be another agenda item for you to consider the document, as well as any comments that may have been submitted at that time.
But no matter what we do with this, if we move number one, or two, or three, there's three things here. You'll still get your money.
Well, we don't care, buddy, if we don't do anything. I mean, I like that.
You had, you had a real chance there to just say yes.
Okay, now here, Kevin, if you'll get out of the saddle. When we first started, on the day that I said, you know, this type of thing, we were going to pay you out of our capacity fees. And we had 1.2 mil in our capacity fees at that time, okay? And the last meeting that we had, we took 800,000 of that capacity fee legitimately, according to our council, and put it in the general fund. So of the capacity fee now, we should only have 400,000, 500,000 dollars left, something like that. Not committed, right?
There's about 200,000.
Uh-huh.
200,000?
A thousand?
200,000, approximately.
Oh, well, that's less than I thought we had. Okay, okay, so. The bottom line is, myself, as one of these five, and looking at our constituents out there, I have the faintest idea how we're gonna pay for this.
You're gonna have to raise rates.
Huh?
The loan and rate.
Oh, we have to go 218 before anybody will loan money. If it's not approved, they won't loan a penny, right? So, see, what we're doing, I've been very successful professionally and personally. If I was gonna do something that costs money, build something, or whatever it was, I'd figure out how the hell I was gonna pay for it before I went down and bought a bunch of boards, okay? And that's what I'm trying to get across here. We're not sure how we're gonna pay for this. We got an idea, we're gonna go 218 with these people out here, and all of that. But we've also, your fee, we had to divert 800,000 dollars to help keep this boat afloat. So I'm just being very truthful. That's what I've been my whole life, it's been very, very good for me. Like I told you, I'm happy. Tom, I really appreciate you coming, because I understand better why we got 600, why you're off 60 percent. But you should have told me that before.
We're in somewhat of a chicken and an egg. I appreciate what you're saying. We all like to know how we're gonna pay for it. But if we don't keep proceeding, then we can't get any farther with the loan process.
Mm-hmm.
We, we can't get the loan unless we get a successful Prop 218. And I equate it to.
All hand in hand.
If you got a surprise tax bill that you had to pay, and you didn't have the money to pay for it, and you had to go get a loan, well, you're kind of in the same spot. You can't say, well, I can't proceed until I have the money to pay for it. But you've got this responsibility, you have to deal with one way or another.
Why can't we put it off until we have the assurance of the money, that we can go ahead with this? I think it's crazy talking to our constituents in the community when they hear about this and say, we're gonna commit to paying 400,000 dollars we don't have. And can we borrow it today, Kevin?
No.
No, we don't have the power to borrow it. So why don't we put it off, where we can deal fairly with the engineers if we're going this way, and our community can? Because this is not George Barber's business. This is Paradise Irrigation District, and the community owns the district. And I have to reply to them about why are we doing this?
Again, don't forget the relationship. This isn't George Barber's water business, but this is George Barber being hired by this board to give you advice, instruction, and, and deal with the process. We've got a regulatory agency that we've got a compliance schedule with. And so if we don't meet the compliance schedule, we're risking the community's money with being fined. That's why we're here there today.
They already put us off a couple of times, and it told me that we want you to be able to financially handle this plan to get it in. They understand that there's, this is a small water district, and we're running out of financial resources. And.
And they may, they may be okay with that.
They will probably put it off under the understanding, because we are attempting to do something. We're not doing nothing. But, and standing back and say, we're not gonna pay any attention to regulations. Instead, we're trying to figure out how to comply with the regulations, and within a financially sound basis for the district and for the people in the district.
I observed that when I attended the meeting there, the red, red, it was one of the many reasons why I went up there, because the board is a very above-board type of an outfit, and they realized people were in there. You know, they're really, they're just to make things happen, but they're willing to work with individuals and entities to make it happen. And, you know, and they'll give lots of time. This process, they call it produce water, process water, it ag. Now, we're talking, there's, it's water developed from the oil industry, drilling oil wells. And they put it back in, and winds up in the groundwater, and this type of thing. And they really bent those people, but there's one irrigation district down there that's irrigating 90,000 acres with several acre feet, and all this type of stuff. But that water board, his water board, really worked with those people.
Yeah, I'll just speak to the legal implications of lots of time. We have been under a time, your district has been under a time schedule order since 2010. The California Water Code allows us to give an extension of a five-year extension and an additional maximum extension after that of five years per the California Water Code, or as short as practical. So we've already extended your time schedule order once, with a final compliance date set in that order of January 1st, 2018. At that point in time, you will lose protection of mandatory minimum penalties. Mandatory minimum penalties get assessed to your district whenever you exceed an F1 limitation violation, or F1 limitation, which is a violation. It's a $3,000 violation, per, uh, $3,000 fee per violation. And that, there's no, that's the minimum amount that our, our board will assess the penalty per, per, per report form. So to say that we can keep granting time is a little bit misleading. Legally, we've granted the amount of time that we're capable of granting, and that is January 1st to 2018. That's when we adopted this recent time schedule order. And so i- if things are continually delayed, you'll be up against a compliance deadline that is legally binding. And once that's up, you'll be subject to monetary fines, a minimum of which would be $3,000 per violation. Now, I can't remember, Jim, if you, the average monthly and the max daily you have for backdoor approval? So, and you sample once per month? So at, at a minimum, when this time schedule order is up, if you're violating, you're DCD on it. You're talking about, you know, $6,000 a month potentially. And then that's the minimum. The board has this discretion to go and fine $10,000 per day, or on a downward basis of what you're discharging. So I, I don't, I'm just trying to speak to the, our board is willing to work with discharters, and I think our board's opinion will be, we have been working with Paradise now, where we're going on. This will be eight years, an eight-year long process of compliance scheduling. You first got this, I, 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 so. I don't, I just don't want there to be the misconception that we have as much time as we want.
But we're making our effort to go forward with our project. You guys are more willing to work with us, like you said.
All right.
But if we say, well, we've just put the brakes on, you know, and then your likelihood of saying, well, okay, then we kind of take our reins off, too.
Well, right. And legally, we're not even able to grant an extension unless, per the California Water Code, the discharters making diligent progress toward the compliance.
So stop, stop working's not diligent progress.
Yeah, so Jim had a write letter to our, our, our office stating, here's our plan, here's what we're planning to do to come into compliance, here's our schedule. Our executive management, our executive officer of the board reviews those items and says, okay, this discharter is making diligent progress per the California Water Code, we can grant them more time. If, if that diligent progress isn't being made by the district, then legally, we can't grant extension after extension unless there's progress being made. You can't just sit there and say, hey, we don't have the funds, we don't have this. I mean, it's kind of a give and take. And, and in my experience with this district, there has been efforts made, working continuously with you guys to make stuff happen. But if you just put the brakes on, then legally, the board kind of is out of, you're not, I guess, satisfying the requirements of your time schedule order. The time schedule order can then be, if you violate it, if you violate these dates.
You're gonna go into take mode instead of give mode, basically.
Well, I was just gonna say this, if you, if you don't, if you're not in compliance with your time schedule order, compliance schedule, that time schedule order is no longer valid, and you then get hit with penalties tomorrow. You have to maintain compliance with your time schedule order as far as the dates are concerned. So if, if that, if you fall out of step with the schedule that has been agreed upon, it's legal, legally binding order, it's in the water board, it's revoked, you're up against your final limits for backdoor approval methane, which you can't need currently. And then we have no choice, literally no choice, but to impose at least a mandatory minimum penalty per law. And so it's very important that you stay on track with your compliance schedule, is what I'm trying to say, because if not, you lose that protection. Right now, you have protection from these penalties, these monetary penalties to this time schedule order.
Thank you, Jeremy. That was the clarification I wanted the board to hear.
And, and our next compliance schedule is 30 percent plans by January 1st, correct?
Yes.
That's correct. And we will be able to satisfy that with a little preliminary design report.
Satisfy part of it with what we have now? With what you've given to us now, it's just been presented since the 4th of this month. Will this satisfy this for the time being, or at least to January 1st, when you want to know what we're doing, and we give you this? Or I should direct this to Jeremy, I guess.
This is a draft file on the board. With your action today, we will want to take direction to how to make that a final, final report, that we can authorize that to use a document to select to the state.
The money we owe you for engineering is all spent, and you just have to bill it to us?
No, we don't.
No.
We invoice on a monthly basis as we work on the project.
It's based on a percent complete.
The progress payments, in October, we, September 30th, we paid you 378,000. And I think the month before that, you had billed us with 313,000. Don't quote those figures, but it was something like that. So you must have done that much work in that, in that particular month, I can see that. I'm not suggesting we put the brakes on. I'm just suggesting we get our act together. Because I feel like we don't have our act together, if you want to know the truth. See, I've been talking about going for this 218, or a way we can favor this damn thing, for two years. And it keeps falling on deaf ears. And what we would have had to do, correct me if I'm wrong, with a tenity plan, we would have gone to the public and said, okay, we're going to be required to build a $14,500,000 plant, which I'll bet you, it started out at 2.5 with Lee and Row, then it went to seven, and that's when I jumped on Roger. And now it's at 14. And before Bill or Jim turns the switch, it's gonna be 20 million. I'll bet you. And that's gonna put this district $30 million in debt for just these two things. This $20 million plant, and the $9 million that we already owe, $9 million, 400, whatever it is. We'll find out in the next board meeting on here. And the public, if we would have told them that the state, this guy right here, good old me and Jeremy, is making us go broke to make our water clear enough for the bugs, it's clean enough for us right now, but for the bugs, it's not that we're putting it down on the type of thing. And we'd have put it, I'm being a little facetious now. But if we'd have put it across in the right way, they would have stood a better chance of buying it than if we put it across now. I really like the look of this.
It's the same story, Dick. And let me remind you guys, last month, we had an opportunity to vote as a board for an emergency supply of money of about 450,000 dollars or so, and the board voted, voted it down.
Hey.
I did not. And now, when something comes up that we didn't see, and we took this money out of the capacity fees, and they're saying, well, let's put it in the general fund, and now you're talking about, well, we gotta save money, we can't do this, we gotta, we gotta stop it. We're out of money. And you're talking about, you are, you're willing to go to the public with it. I'll let you talk, Bill, when I'm finished. Would you like to interrupt me, so you could?
Yeah, I would. I think it's unnecessary. And something was told to us in closed session of the reason that vote went the way it was. Would you like to address that?
Why don't you address it, Bill?
No, I don't wanna break the brown out. But I think the other.
Oh, you want me to break the brown?
You're wasting your time.
We had an opportunity to get some more money in here on an emergency basis. The board chose not to do it. That is shortsightedness.
It would have been a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars a month.
About Proposition 218, and what we're gonna do, and how we're going to do it with these new rulings that are coming out, it's making it so difficult. And that's, that's why it is taking an extraordinary amount of time. We're gonna go to the public with the exact arguments that we have today, that we had last month, and that we've had for the last six months.
And the last two years.
We've got all of these bills we have to pay, we've got all of these projects we have to pay. We've got some smart ways that we can spend maybe an extra $500,000 to save maybe a million. If we do these other little ancillary projects while we do the big one, at a cost of $500,000, and it might cost 1.5 or 2 million, if we wait, let us have several years go by, and then go back in and re-dig up the same places where we're trenching now. we're trenching now. These are the decisions the board is gonna have to stand up, present to the public, "This is why we're asking for this much money," and get a vote from the public. Okay? That's where we are, and I'm a little bit, uh, dismayed, because you seem, you, Doug, seem to be blaming the rest of the board for not following along and getting a rate increase from two years ago. Well, all...
No, I said we should have, we knew this was coming, Ken.
Yeah, I am.
You could see it just plain. And I started to sugge- yeah, you could see it coming, and I started to suggesting that we go for the 218 and tell the people why we need it, because they're mandating it.
We couldn't go for it until we noted what we need. That, we, we, we were gonna ask for, Doug, enough to cover 5 million? Well, you just said it's gonna be a $20 million project, so if we don't ask for enough for 5 million, we can't go to 218 just every five minutes when we decide, "Oh, gosh, you know, it was 5, that's 10." You have to do this in a process where we know what the total is. They're presenting a total to us now that looks relatively close to what we think is gonna be the final product. But do you have your crystal ball on you tonight, Tom? Do you, did you bring that with you? Because I'm pretty sure...
No, I have it.
Exactly. Yeah, mine's there, too. So, we're not gonna be able to know the exact number until the day we pay the final bill. That'll be the exact number. But every time you guys spit out numbers out of your mouth, you have no idea what the final number's gonna be till we get the final last-day bill. But we have to make the best guess. So, to go to 218 two years ago would have been stupid. To go to 218 a year ago, that would have been stupid. Six months ago, the same case. Now, we're at a point we're ready to go to 218. That's why these guys are here for this meeting tonight, so we can finally figure out what the total dollar is that we need to ask for. Kevin can't input imaginary numbers. Kim can't, and, and Larry can't decide what we're gonna be asking for on the committee until we know the number. You know the number now, so the most approximate numbers we can get.
Well, yeah, and, and like, didn't get it, Tom. We can come up with a number and say, "This is what we're gonna have to have for the next five years," something like that. But holy mackerel, 30 days can go by, and we can be hit with another big surprise.
When we did the last 218...
And we have to try and adjust.
When we did the last 218, this process water project came in, what, six months after we had closed our 218? We, lo and behold, in comes the letter. Dustin comes in, George comes in and says, "Guess what? This is the project that the government's just laying on us." We had no idea this was something we were gonna have to do. Otherwise, we'd have probably incorporated into the, the last.
I think I'm probably guilty of letting us get off track.
Well, that's off track, but it's something that we gotta address.
If, if we can get to the estimate that we have, it may help quell some of the butterflies about the total number that you've been throwing around, it's 14 and a half million, because there's contingency factor that's included in there. It's fairly reasonable, and we would anticipate that, that, uh, that, that total should come down as we respond. It shouldn't go up.
That's what I understand, but we will, we'll, we'll move forward and, and entertain directors' comments and questions as they come out. So, thank you for letting us, uh, letting...
I had a question, though. This is circulate on 218, 30 days, and then we adopt it in less than 30 days.
This is the column's heading, "Finish Date."
Oh, that's finish date. Oh, okay. Now, I understand.
Yeah, and my thing with the, uh, 30 days, um, if this is going through the State Revolving Fund of the State Water Resource Board, it's actually 36. They want to provide an extra cushion for the mailing of documents that didn't exist.
Okay, so then it's gonna start 36 days before 218.
It'll be six days after that.
Yeah.
Or you're gonna...
It's still 224.
Still, yeah, okay. Still puts the time, but it's adapted on 33. Okay, I understand. I missed the finish.
And, and then the line underneath the SEQA Environment Services is the SRF Loan Technical Assistance Program, which is, uh, being led by your staff, and it provides some technical assistance along that particular assignment. But that's a long duration, but it's not a continuous effort. It's just, uh, feed information into the system when it's due. And the la- the other item that we'll be actually working on is the final design. We don't want to engage our final design team until we know for sure what it is that you want to do, uh, out of the plan. If you do this properly, you'll be able to have, uh, 30%, 60%, 90% submittals for review or, uh, approval through your staff, and delivering a project and be ready to bid sometime in June.
Carl, um, are we likely to see any significant changes between your preliminary design plan now and then with things that you look, try to engineer or discover, you're writing things, you come up with new issues? Are we likely to see any significant changes in a final design plan?
Not significant changes, no. I mean, we have a few floating things out here, like what type of groundwater machine are we going to have? How many trees are we going to have? Can we maybe go, if we add an extra 100 feet of pipe, we can avoid three trees. This is just kind of refinement stuff we're working on. We have to demolish an old chlorine building. Are there any bones in the closet these days? When we get in there, some electrical still has to be rerouted somewhere else. These are the smaller issues that we have to address along the way. My new details, don't need to get too involved with, but these are the kind of things that pop up, that as engineers, we love to work on and refine it, too. But I don't see any big showstoppers out there that's gonna severe an impact on the standard or the cost.
And he's saying that as it's refined, the price may go down.
It may.
I'm saying may.
And, and again, I would, I would defer to what Carl's prepared in terms of breakdown so that, because we've looked at and done a much better job of quantifying the components of the, of the overall project, the various systems involved, and the quantities involved with that, so that we can apply current prices to. Uh, as, as Ken pointed out, 30 days from now, the prices may change. But during the detailed designing process, we will refine this further to the point where we can really dial those in. We provide clarity for the contractor. The clearer the definition of what the contractor has to do, the better price you can get, because it reduces his risk after he signs the document. So, I think maybe we can just bust on in to look at it the...
We talked about the next steps, how we're ready to go with those, and now we can get into the construction costs. This is the, uh, our same chart numbers that are in your report on that page 1-4 we're looking at before, except the only difference is we have subtotals for items 1, 1A, and 2 at this $13,600,000. And then the other parts, 3 through 8, subtotally $930,000. That gets us to rounded-off numbers, 14.5. We talked about these items here, whether they're optional or not, nice to haves, must to haves, these type of arrangements. George covered that with you already, but I'm gonna focus on these ones up here.
Thanks.
Okay, there it is, on our screen now.
This is where, you know, you have your baseline set for you when you heard from Lee and Row what the cost of the construction was going to be, and it has increased since then.
Can I ask you a question, Carl?
Yes.
That 11 mil 800,000, does that include these five tanks that you're talking about?
Yes.
Five tanks. Yeah, there's the 1A, the 1.6 bill. That includes the, uh, centrifuge and all of the other stuff.
Right. Demolition of the old end of the plant, building a new bill in there, there's a couple of reinforced concrete poles, and space to put the new mechanical groundwater jobs. Including relocating the aqua chlorine system, part of that group, to make space for the other tanks on the other side of the site.
Does this include the cost of SEQA?
The SEQA cost is, is roughly presented in here, but not as clearly as perhaps we'd like to. Now, this is where Tom is asking me to try to elaborate on this screen, even if I can't. I don't have an actual sheet that shows the breakdown of the cost estimate, but here's how we do it. We estimate quantities. We estimate how much, how many plants we got from the plant, how many pieces of... Is it in the PDR? The small version of the PDR? Because I have that up. I can bring it up on the screen if you want. I don't, uh... Show the break down. I don't believe that break down's in here, George. Okay. So, we estimate the quantities involved, estimate pure cost, neighbor cost, and other type of costs associated with installing and operating. We take that number, we add all up, and that's what we call the construction cost estimate, or cost of improvements. Then we add, uh, the, uh, 30% contingency to that number. This is a happy contingency cost. This is, uh, you've got $10 million, you have 30%. Where are you at? And that's your number.
That's $30 million. That's why I'm saying that you're gonna be looking at 20, because the 30% contingency cost, uh, actually...
It's in there. It's in there.
The 30 is in there.
They've already added 30.
I already added here, sir. We also have added an extra 21% for construction overhead profit. Your contractor's in there. He wants to get paid for what he's doing, too. And that includes his overhead and his money he has to make on the job. So, when you compound 30%, 21%, we're almost grand, right? 50% to the actual cost of that piece of brick to be installed.
Yeah, but it is true cost. It isn't, it isn't gonna go away.
So, I...
But you have to understand that that 30% is 30% at this point in time, because we don't have the level of detail necessary to pair that in. When we get to a 90% design, we will drop that contingency to between 5 and 10, depending on what unknowns are still remaining.
Whatever comes out. In other words, this 14.5 down here at the bottom, you've had a 30% contingency fee and a 21% construction fee?
Contractor overhead.
Contractor overhead, yeah.
That's included in that 14.5.
That's included.
And like Tom said...
It doesn't say it here anywhere. If it did, I didn't pick it up.
Oh, it doesn't say.
Okay, it doesn't say it, but I got it down now. Okay. If you're not looking at 20, maybe you're not looking at 20 million. But that's how this thing has been going ever since we went 2.5 bill to solve the whole problem, you know? It's been mushrooming like that.
The cyclic and corrosive cyclic issues.
The problem was asking for a price when nobody knew anything.
Well, and, and that's always a difficulty. I mean, you're trying to...
Sure.
You're, the burden on you when you're trying to, uh, identify the capital costs of an improvement that you need, you know you need, and need a regulatory requirement. You've gotta do it. How do you define that? Well, you have to have, somebody can say, "Well, this is what you need. This is how much it's gonna cost." Until you define that well enough, you're not gonna get a buy of the cost. And now, we're to a point that I think we've got a very good baseline definition in this preliminary design report. We've got reasonable contingency embedded in there. And that contingency, because of the definition, will likely go down as we take the unknowns out of it, as we get detailed design in.
The reason you say it's gonna go down is because you have this 30% and the 21% involved in it.
Well, the 21% is a given, just like... A little float. The 21% will float with the construction cost. The 30% is, is a total of our, our gross estimate of construction cost at this point in time that says, "Okay, here's what we think it's gonna cost, but we really don't know, because we haven't done the details. So, we're gonna tack on another 30% so that we're not the low bidder when it kind of goes out, right?"
Buffer.
Yeah, well, it's, it's only reasonable, because you're gonna have to try and secure funding for this. And you don't want to do, like, like Seth was saying, you don't want to go out and, and try to secure funding for a $2 million project, like it's gonna end up costing you 5. You want a reasonably conservative number to shoot at, and if you come in under that number, which is the goal, then, you know...
Oh, you're far less.
Yeah. Well, then you're, you're a hero, right?
I understand all that.
Well, that's in my business, when somebody says, "What do you charge for this?", I always double it, and then when it comes in less, they really love it. Because you got, you don't want to come in more.
Without, just for clarification, without the 30% contingency factor that did the estimate of cost at this point, which includes the contractor profit, is, uh, $10,150,000.
Somewhere in there.
At 70% of $14,100,000.
But it might even be less, because the...
Right.
Because the contractor's price is gonna go down on the profit, because he's not gonna be charging. Possible.
Well, if any, obviously.
Yeah, I was gonna say, hold on. I wouldn't start holding your breath on that end of it, Larry. That's...
Well, some places, like those...
Talking to contractors.
Depends on how hungry they are. We were looking at tidby before.
Right.
We had a rough estimate of tidby at all.
If, if you, if you take all of the components here and, and you assign risk levels to the definition that we got, I don't see how we can honestly, um, leap off, you know, cut that percentage. I wouldn't pay it down at this point. Can't reduce it to 20% or 15% at this time. We don't have the, uh...
We want to leave the 30 to the 30, yeah.
14.5. We want to keep it at 14.5.
Refine it so that we end up a little...
Well, see, that's what I did on the top of this one here when I came up with the 20, because I've been adding that up over all these different figures that have come in over time, and that's what it's come out to be. I didn't, I didn't know that you had, see, I had no way to know that, that you put that 30% into the 21, because it doesn't say it.
They held out on you, Doug.
They held out on me.
I think Tom did that on purpose.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but he came here to own up. Right, that's, that's, that's a good man right there. I told him I was a good man.
For my test.
I guess you did.
So, it sounds like if we told him we'd give 14.5, they'd be happy.
Okay. Well, there's still another part of the story, isn't there? Isn't there additional engineering?
Yes, and we can go to that now.
Right.
The next slide is the proposed amendment to the agreement. And, uh, what I, what we've done here is we've broken it down into tasks, 1, 2, 3, and 4. And, uh, task 2, actually, has been broken down into the final design program. 4, performance 1 to, which we call, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, 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 the second, the, 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 So we're going to focus on task one, two, and three.
You, you should be clear that you're not proposing to do it for free. You're just not putting...
Yeah, because I don't want to come back as that team either.
Aw, you're so bad.
No, no.
You just don't want to give a price until you know what we're building.
If you take that, I mean, off the, off the table, let me say first of all, that we have a contract to be able to provide that service to you, but no money of funds has been allocated to do that service at this point in time. If you choose to continue with the project, or if you continue with that service, hire a new company, we have a negative note in the contract to make that. So we can just regard that now, and move back to the very first line, which is preliminary task one, preliminary design. Carl, aren't you already finished with preliminary design?
Yes, we are.
Well, why are you asking for another twenty thousand dollars for a proposed change on task one preliminary design? Well, because during the process of doing preliminary design, we had pilot tests, we had subcontractors, we did a few technical investigations, there was additional, uh, environmental work that was done, that really related preliminary design. But those activities went over the allotted money we had designated for preliminary design by the ten thousand dollars. So the actual money spent during preliminary design, we're asking now the board to authorize as additional cost change order for that particular task. I can break those down further if you like, but I'm going to continue from that. Task two, final design, under the current agreement, performance one and two, the total value of the work that we were doing, which is based on a level of effort breakdown, the work breakdown structure in terms of how many principal engineer time hours would require, how many project manager hours are required, how many engineer get after, all the different categories of staff members that we have working on the project, multiply that, their rate, and it comes up with actually a value. So the current contract estimated at final design, which we have started, we're getting ready to start, it costs seven hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, based on the scope that was defined in the Lee and Rowe report in March two thousand fourteen. Now that we redefine the project definition, including all those things of what's changed, remember we had that couple tables in the beginning about all the things that have changed? We, we need to spend more money to get this design done. Why? One reason why is that we just don't have a tank anymore. We've taken that one tank that was in the bottom right corner, remember that long rectangular tank? And we stood that in the three pieces now. Something here, something here, something over here. So what does that mean for engineering when you do this? It affects the, the actual things that we produce as tangible items. Engineers don't build, they don't build, we produce paper, we produce drawn specifications, reports. And we estimate our level of effort based on the number of drawings that we're going to prepare. So this actually reflects that, to do the redefining scope of work, we're going to have to produce more drawings. Let me add it up a little bit. Why do we need to produce more drawings, Carl? Because we're covering a larger geographical area of the site. And these areas we weren't touching before, but now we are, so we have, we have to clear site plans and trade connections at that part. Bottom line is, the original current, the current agreement calls for a hundred and thirty-seven drawings. The new redefined project for one-two calls for a hundred and seventy-three drawings, additional thirty-six drawings. The number is, uh, not exactly proportional to that, but it's, it's the reason why we expanded, because not just adding thirty-six more drawings, but the level of detail of some of the drawings is more complicated as well. And this is a justification for the proposed changes. Our production is going to be more specifications and more drawings produced, and that just takes time and effort and people. All those numbers in there are always there at the time, very little of it is related to what we call other direct costs, where we hire a surveyor. Yes, we have to do the surveyor out there, the rain from LAL will go out there and do some more work for us. And yes, we have to hire a geotek to go out there, check a few more things on what kind of soil we took, we're going to have a structural review behind the top, which is iPhone, but with the radio and the labor, we need to talk.
You know, I was looking at this, I looked, this is excellent, as a matter of fact. I'm really impressed, a lot of the stuff I don't understand, but a lot of it I do. And on your tanks, you've got three tanks that are hooked right together, and two of them are washwater, equalization, and they're thirty-eight by thirty-eight by twenty-seven. I guess the twenty-seven is tall, right? And then there's one there, this one right here.
Okay.
And the other tank that there is, uh, twenty-five, twenty-five, thirty-eight by twenty-five, those are big tanks.
Yes, sir.
Those are big tanks. I bet you they're beautiful things, too. And then the other two that you're going to be building out over here, kind of comparable on that type of thing, but... If you say that's all of this eleven thousand eight hundred dollar thing, the estimate, it's not on this page here, but it's on another one.
On the construction cost, yes. And the rectangular, big rectangular tanks will be built out of reinforced concrete.
And you're, you know, reinforced concrete, you were going to be looking between steel and concrete, and I would certainly take George and our staff back here's thoughts on that, but concrete, you know, has a hell of a long half-life. But anyway, uh, there'll be a, this project, well, the plan will be available. I mean, for whoever gets it, you know, so it'll be planned out, rebar, and all that kind of stuff. And it'll be, what kind of compaction are you looking at underneath that? Because we apparently had a tank that cracked because of, on that type of soil, that's horrible soil.
Well, I think the, I think the material that was excavated and pushed over to build that portion of the site wasn't placed properly.
Wasn't placed properly.
It's not that it couldn't have been, but it was obviously too loose and sedimented the curves.
Well, I watched some of that being done, because I'm interested in that type of stuff, and had no idea it'd ever be on the PID board, and, you know, they were, but their lifts were too high. You know, if you get over four inches, it's hard to compact it. They, they had some there that were twelve inches, and you can't...
Well, I think it depends on the composition of materials.
Depend on the material.
You've got to get moisture content.
But that, but that was...
I think, I think as a board, we should be interested in the numbers and not how they're going to soil compact, because that's not really what we do. We're not into maintaining soil compaction, so why don't you, why don't you go ahead?
Um, that's my, my...
Yeah, I'm sure it is, I'm sure it is. That's not, that's not what we're supposed to be...
President, I came up with the right thing, I'm just detailed for you, because when I move to pass fourteen million dollars, I want to have a little what's happening.
We'll need to make sure that the public knows that soil compaction was included in there, so I'm sure he, he knows what they're doing in that respect.
Yep, I have complete faith that these guys do that.
I do, too.
Okay, thank you. Now, we were also asked to subdivide the final design activity for those other components, three through eight, the ones that you guys, you know, have interest in, maybe redefine or maybe adjusting, tell me about doing those. And the proposed change to do those additional components is another forty-nine thousand dollars. Not much money compared to the additional cost to do one and two, relatively speaking. And that's the beauty of it is, not only can you get the construction built for a relatively low money, if you combine with everything else, you can also get the engineering there for a lot less money for the value of construction if you do it with everything else. What happens is, under, under components three and eight, it will add, actually add seven drawings to our, our now a hundred and eighty drawing set. But it also will touch on twenty-four other drawings. In other words, we already have a drawing right there, it's going to use that pipe, okay? That's even enough, it's on, and that's all we have to do. But again, do it all by yourself, stand by, do all the drawing all by yourself, just to show one pipe. We're able to incorporate a lot of those things into the existing drawing set, without having to generate new drawings, and that helps keep your cost down.
Well, seeing I'm being rather vocal, but I was looking at all this, evaluating the best I could, I think three, three through eight, is a little thing we're attached on, is really critical for a good project finish. If we, if we didn't do this, if you didn't pick it out, would not be a complete project. I mean, three through eight.
Uh, well, the, the components to just make your compliance are, are the first three.
Yeah.
You may have other justification and drivers for wanting to get those done, whether it's complete...
But, you know, after the project is all done, by doing these quite properly, like I'm sure you two have done, it'll really make a nice solid project.
It saves us a lot of money on future construction costs.
Yes, definitely.
By investing now.
And if you visualize in the future, too, you've got these big cracks in the pavement out there, how would you see these things? Understand what I'm having for, well, our asphalt painting guys got on top of that day, they was proud of this, and they say it was a wrong mix in the asphalt, and people come up with a way to remedy that. But there's going to be a day...
I was glad to hear the answer. We thought the ground had sloped or fell apart. We're glad to hear it's just asphalt.
But there's going to be a day, hopefully...
It can still be a day.
When we can all get together again one day, when we have a ribbon cutting ceremony out there. And you want to be cracked and paved on that day? You know, this kind of thing. You want to be a good-looking plant, or not? And this is the kind of thing, somebody says, do you want those tanks painted different colors or the same color? These are the kind of things we're talking about, though. Some of this is really getting toward that also. Is the plan going to be a totally new facility or a renewed facility at that time? And this is, well, I just want to make sure you guys have a vision out there what that's going to look like.
I'm sure it's...
Yeah, our, our, the five of us here have the financial responsibility to the community, that's our prime responsibility. So our problem is, how do we argue and fight quite a bit, because we're fighting over how we're going to pay for it, and how much money? And we have to put this proposition up to the community to vote, pay raises, basically, for paying for this among monks, just trying to get enough money to keep the district together for thirty days. So we're caught in a little bit of a squeeze right now. We need to get a two-eighteen up, we have to decide on how much we're going to ask for, and we have to get the community's support to pass it. And just like you show on your chart, you have to have community's support before this is finished. But we, if we're going to raise fourteen million plus, it looks like more like fifteen or sixteen million, to me, I'm not quite as high as that. But we have to get community support. And right now, we don't have it. So we have to do a sales job on this, and we have to still pay our bills. So if you don't mind, my idea is, basically, we put you off on this addition, let you keep working with what you have, and let us see if we can raise the money to pay for it, and if the people in the community want it. So...
Carl, I will, I will tell you, as a differing opinion, because as Bill says, we have five different people up here, and we think differently. I think that we easily have community support to move forward, pay for the projects, accept the rate increase, and, and move on into the future. And I don't think it's something where we have to re-educate the community. I think it's something where we just need to inform, get their concurrence, and we move forward. And I'm not afraid of the two-eighteen process at all. The, the time it's taken us on the two-eighteen process is because of the weird way the laws have been generated, that we have to comply, and, and we want to be exceedingly fair to all levels, economic stratus throughout the community, uh, trying to not stray too far from the way things have been done in the past, but still yet meet the legal requirements. And it's driving George and Dustin and Ken and Bill crazy. That's my opinion, and we'll, we will be successful in, in getting the concurrence of the public, and getting, getting our funding, and paying our bills. So your check's in the mail.
It may bounce, but...
It's in the mail. Okay.
Can I ask some questions? Carl, I'm sorry, I normally like to give advance notice of this, but I'm looking at your proposed narrative in support of amendment four, where you kind of itemize, but without numbers, all the changes, both that have occurred in the past and that you anticipate happening in the future. Can you quantify these? Let me, let me describe what I'm struggling with.
Okay.
I'm very proud in our contract, we have a very specific extra work change order process. And it looks like some of the preliminary design, um, should have been routed through that process. This is, I, I think it's work that's already been done, that you guys are seeking reimbursement for, that, that's above and beyond arguably what the original contract said. And then the final design work is more future work that hasn't occurred yet, is, is that fair to say?
Yes.
So I'm just trying to, you know, you've got, um, this is page two of your narrative, where you go through all the items in task one that are changes. I'm just, how did you come up with a twenty thousand seven eighty-five? How much, for example, um, you've got some, one, task one point three project meetings, you've had to meet more frequently with staff and onsite...
The back of that proposal is...
I don't think I have that.
...a long, complicated spreadsheet. But it does have the breakdown, I can read it to you. It breaks down the, uh, library over there, anyway.
Hopefully it was in your attachment.
It was on this attachment, it's a long spreadsheet. And this is the task one I have spoken about.
Can we have a break, okay?
So we're extending project management for the duration of time up to...
Yeah, take a break and let them...
Yeah, listen to it. We, we will go ahead and take a, a few minute break, where we can use the restroom, that's in front of my kitchen, and we're kind of taking...
I have some, some, like, two thousand...
We will now reconvene the meeting from our five-minute break, which I, I think stretched into twenty or twenty-five. But let us get back on track, and where, Carl, do you...
Only one more slide, and this is the summary slide of the, of the cost that we just talked about. Engineering fees add up to this amount of money total, and the construction fees add up to this amount of money total.
Well, it's in the fourteen-five.
Now, part of that engineering fees is already under contract. So we talked about the increase to that engineering fees, is this number down here, four twenty-nine, four thirty, round it up. Which carries the total to the one point six million total engineering fees.
But, go to the next slide?
The next slide is the summary of the engineering fees, which should be there, one point six four five.
Oh, okay.
Thanks to that.
So at this point, we would add those two bottom figures together to get a total of engineering and the construction cost with the...
Total value of your, your project.
Right.
Not the total of extra money we're looking for.
Right.
One point two.
So sixteen point one four five million.
Yeah, that's what I, I added it up there, before we started the...
Now, for, for total disclosure, if you need to back that slide.
There's zeros.
Because there's zeros in task four, construction services.
That's true.
Yeah, and I would, if, if you're using it for capital...
That's, that's good to read.
I think you've got to add...
Add something in there.
About fifteen percent of the other number, the cover...
Of the construction number?
Service during task, during construction.
For the project management? Is that what that is?
Yeah, service inspection, quality assurance, oversight, that sort of stuff. It really depends on, I mean, we, when we did the role of our podcast, we kind of tag teamed on that.
Yeah, this one, we don't have, not with this type of construction, that was laying pipe and a little concrete.
Stayed on the fourteen-five, we should add fifty percent for inspection and...
Correct. Not, not on, don't add that out of the...
No, not on the engineering part, on the fourteen-five.
So you're looking at...
Fifty percent for inspection and that type of thing.
Engineering services during construction.
Two hundred...
Testing, quality control, inspection.
Because if it doesn't get done well, then your tank has a crack in the corner.
Most of the time.
If it's not, if you don't watch the contractor well, you end up with a crack in the tank.
Well, you have to add that to the, the prop two-eighteen, right?
Yeah, that's, that's why I brought it up. Here you go after money, you want to go after that total.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what we have to add.
Shorten it then, because I don't want to come to that meeting here.
Well, it's good to remind us of that, um, because I kind of like the fact that it was for free in there with those...
I like those girls, yeah. Tom, we hope that you come to every key meeting we have, including the ribbon cutting, all right?
I'm happy to do that.
Hey, Doug, it'll cost more.
Okay.
It's going to cost you anyway. He'll put that in.
Hold, hold for just a moment, I, I just want to ask the board, at this point, before we go to the public for input, are there any additional questions or comments or items to ask of staff or of Carl or Tom or, or Jeremy? Uh, Jeff.
Or Jeremy.
Okay, we got another guy.
We've got four people out there.
We still have director's comments, right?
Yeah.
We got lots of stuff.
Okay.
Okay, then, public...
Can I add?
Yes.
I'll just throw this out before you get to public participation. I pulled Tom and Carl aside, listening to your, some of your concerns and what we're faced here, and we discussed an alternative to what's presented today, and that would be for you to approve, uh, an adjustment to the scope to meet what the project has really turned into, uh, but delay the approval of the additional engineering fees, um, as we get through the Prop two-eighteen process. So that allows us to keep moving forward, them continuing to do the work, they'll probably hit about sixty percent design plus or minus, before they'd have to say, hey, we're, we're going to run out of money without an amendment. But that, that kind of alleviates the board from committing to the extra four hundred thousand dollars today, but keeps them proceeding forward with getting the, the, the work done.
Well, let me ask this question then, because it's along the same line, and it was a question that I was going to ask probably of, of Tom or whoever's brave enough to stand up and answer it.
That's my fault.
And that is this. Okay, here we are, out of our one point one or one point two one five million dollars that we've approved for a contract, you've gone this far into developing the engineering for it. And since you've seen the scope change, you've brought it back to management and said, we're going to have to talk to the board again, because if we're going to come, complete this in the way that we see it should be completed, it's going to take an extra thirty-nine drawings for just the things that we're committed to, plus another seven if you want to do the additional work. And for some reason, the cost of these last few drawings per drawing are more than the first hundred thirty-seven thousand, because I did the math. But what are we left with if we say no? If we say we're not going to approve, uh, this change in scope, if we say we don't want these additional thirty-nine drawings, if we say, basically, I'm, I'm not sure if this these additional 39 drawings, if we say, basically, I'm not sure if this means this, if we say we don't like your ideas, we like Lee and Rowe ideas, continue on with the Lee and Rowe program, go back to the house down there that might sink into the earth, you know, the tanks down there and so on and so forth, I presume you could competently finish up those drawings for us. What are we left with if we say no tonight to this additional Components One and Components Two?
One of the things that's changed since Lee and Rowe was working on their preliminary design report is that we received new direction from Division of Drinking Water regarding how can we use this water that we're treating through the Process Water Recycling Project. Initially, at the time that Lee and Rowe was working on this, we thought we could recycle that water through the flushing process at 100%. We've since found out that you want those clarifiers cleared at the end of the flushing work, they don't want us to go put a clarifier back online with water that's been used, or whether the water that's come out of the process recycling, they'd like that to be raw water when the clarifier goes back online. What that does is it changes everything about the kind of, the way that Lee and Rowe concept was developed. We need more tankage, we have to just process everything in a different way. And AECom's put a fair amount of effort in modeling how that works, how the tankage has to be sized, how the units have to be sized to make that all fit together. But that was a pretty significant impact to the way everything was formulated in Lee and Rowe version of this project versus the AECom version of this project. And so to go back now to the Lee and Rowe element, it wouldn't work.
So Lee and Rowe...
We just had the water going straight through flushing and coming back flushing, and then we were using it to keep flushing.
It won't get approved. So they'll design something that we can't get the Health Department to approve.
Yeah, well, no, but what would have happened is if we would have selected to move on with Lee and Rowe, then Lee and Rowe, based upon these changes, the new regulations would have come to us and said, we got to change the scope.
Yep.
Okay, that's what I'd like to know, was...
And that sort of explains the 20,000, 785.
I hope I wasn't even hitting that we would go back to Lee and Rowe, because from this chair, which is over there, I made a point that I didn't care for Lee and Rowe's way they presented it and tuck old Roger to task more so than you, Tom, on here when he came back through. And because Lee and Rowe was not following you guys, Jim, Bill and you suggestions. And I made this a point. AECom, I really appreciate what they've done and their work is extremely professional and they're above the wood and so on. I have no problem with that at all, even though I've taken old Tom to task. Just like I told him I would.
Legal?
I've heard this a couple times, most recently George's comment. Remember, I write into every contract, most every contract, that the district can terminate an agreement at any time for any reason. And that's in the current agreement with AECom. So if something fundamentally changes, your Prop 218 process that we're certainly hoping is successful doesn't pass, and we need to say timeout, we have the contracting language in place currently to do that. Or maybe the state decides that this is no longer a constituent of concern, that would be really nice. Or a cure for cancer, maybe, I don't know.
Don't hold your breath.
But anyways, I thought, you know, so don't, don't be so concerned about if you're going to approve this tonight, that you are automatically committing to expend the funds, because you do have off-ramps built in to your...
Well, I understand that we still, as a board, need to approve the contractor that we put it out, we put it out to bid.
Yep.
We still have to approve it.
Still have to.
And I presume that we could come in and say no, and that would kill the project.
You're going to undertake environmental review, and that may disclose an endangered something, and all of a sudden our plans are shot. You never know.
We would still, we would still have to pay the 16, 1.6 mil for the engineering work and all of that.
No, you'd only pay for what we had done.
What you've done, let's say we're all done, and we would have to pay that, but we could turn down the 14 mil...
Construction.
Yeah, construction thing if we weren't going to do it.
And then we just pay $10,000 a day in fines.
How many days would that be?
Take your point.
10,000, divide 10,000 into 145.
300,000 a month, 3.6 million a year.
Which takes five years, only takes five years to pay for the plan at that point.
I think that's an accurately painted exit point. It's very common for us in working for public agencies, because of the same situation that you have, the vast majority of them have no lock on running that they're planning on spending. There's, you know, there's all a matter of hooks on the money. And if at some point the money goes away because, you know, of an encumbrance that occurred before, whatever, they'll terminate. And basically, we get paid for what we've done up to that point, we box it up and give it to you and... So, I mean, you could do that, or you could do the no-cost change order that George was thinking of creatively, that we would change the scope to reflect the change in the scope, but we would only execute up to about 70% of the contract values so that you had a distinct termination point in which we'd come back and say, well, are you ready to go forward? Did your money come through? Or if you get to the point before that and you can't change it, obviously, you're not going to get off the regulatory hook, but this... We're more than going to...
You go to the photo group, go ahead.
I was going to say, what, George, the suggestion you made, what's the advantage?
Well, there was just some concern...
We have off-ramps already.
I understand that, but when I heard the discussion, there was concerns about committing until we had the Prop 218 done, so I was coming up with a middle of the road that we could continue to proceed without...
And that's really critical, because you've got a schedule that the time order has been based on. And to stay on that schedule until you find out, you know, maybe you find out, you can't, you've got to think of alternative paths, but to stay on that schedule is critical.
Yeah, but it sounds like we could stay on schedule, we approve the expenses, and then if we have to get an off-ramp, we have opportunities for the off-ramp.
We have that too.
It seems like it's sixes, it'll work the same way both directions.
I feel we might get off our schedule if we...
Didn't have the money?
We didn't do it.
No, I mean, if we didn't...
If we don't do the no-cost...
If we don't do the no-cost change, then...
I think George has come up with a...
If we don't, we say no.
I think George has come up with a next change order, soft process idea, doing it. We're talking about item number three down here. And I was going to vote for that. I was going to try to postpone it to our next board meeting. See if they can figure out a way that we can cover the $400,000.
You can cover it by raising rates.
Yeah.
It's not due, it's not due today.
George's idea would solve this problem.
That's the clarification point, though, is that $400,000 is not due today, Tom's not sitting in his chair, he's going to be here till midnight till we cut the checks at $400,000.
You just wouldn't do the $400,000 worth of work right now.
Correct. But we can get, we can get through the environmental documents, issuance and approval, and get up to probably 65% design without having to mobilize that money.
That's keep us somewhere...
And that will give you enough time to get through the process of finding the money we need for the program.
And it would keep us on track.
Yes, I think that's a very important aspect of this team.
Jeremy was talking about.
Okay, anything else from staff or board members?
I'll do it, director's comments, Dan's trying to get your attention.
Then we will, then we're going to go to public comments portion. At this point, the public will have, those who choose to speak will have up to five minutes to give their opinions, make questions to the board, not to staff or to legal, and not to our contractors, but direct it towards us, and then we will handle those and move to the next public speaker.
Thank you for the five minutes.
Well, it's all yours.
I've listened to all this stuff, and I'm not an engineer, so most of this is just gobbledygook jargon to me. But we've heard from engineers, and we've heard from environmentalists, we've heard from regulators, and we've heard from directors, and we've heard from staff, but we haven't heard from the public yet. And they're the people that are going to pay the bill. And I think this delay on the 218 process is causing a lot of anxiety in the 27,000 people in this town of paradise. And you need to get that going now, regardless, because the longer you wait, the harder it's going to be to sell it. I'm going to be honest with you. I've heard about saving trees, and I've learned that raptors are upset by a lot of noises, and that bothers me too, by the way. But we need to think about the people who are going to pay the damn bill, and they want to know. We put out, four months ago, I think it was, the staff put out a group of plans where you could take it, make a choice. And boy, everybody, oh, boy, that's great, you know, people heard about that, and I like this plan, like that one. All of a sudden, that just went away. No more comment, no more discussion. The most important comment I heard tonight from anybody was from Director Flusher, who said, what's it going to cost? And that's what we need to know, is it going to be 10.1, is it going to be 14.5, or is it going to be, as bureaucracy, bureaucracies usually do, 20.5? I don't know. We have to have it by law, we have to do it by law. I don't know whether it's going to be the end result, because we don't know whether the landfill is going to take the waste material that's being thrown off by this process. They could say, oh, well, we want another million dollars for that. Where are we going? Get the 218, get your rates in line, get the 218 process in motion, and let's see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other people from the public that would like to speak to us? Dan?
I have a short question. What happens if 218 goes fast? I know everybody, probably everybody's...
How are we going to what?
The files.
Office of AID, or over 30 times, I would do 30 times if I had the money.
We'll liquidate the ID.
Well, let's see, that's something that I would kind of like to have an answer to, because I'm thinking that the next company who inherits the Paradise Irrigation District, and might be Bob Fortino comes in to run this, he'll probably go to the PUC and just ask for a rate increase. But do you have an answer for...
The more likely scenario is the regulators come in and take over the district, put it into receivership. State agencies aren't subject to Prop 218, so they just impose whatever fees are necessary.
Wow.
And same with the CPUC regulated entity, they, they're not subject to 218, but they are subject to a rate-making process that's regulated by the PUC, but it's a little bit easier, I believe. Bill?
What happens to management under that scenario?
I think you're all, everybody's out of office under that scenario.
Yeah, we're all out of office and probably management's gone and everything. Okay. Basically, it's government bankruptcy.
Sounds that way. Thank you, Dan. Next public speaker, please, if anybody would like to address us. Robin?
I've got so many notes, I'm not sure I'm quite ready to speak, but yeah, this proposed project has been well thought out, and alternatives have already been considered. I don't think I got an answer on how much SEQA is expected to cost.
On how much what?
SEQA, the mitigated negative deck.
Carl alluded to that, but...
Do you have the answer?
Well, the answer is we don't have an exact number, but we're not sure how long it's going to go on or the determination to come in. But we do have a placeholder for some of the land that has a contingency.
Go ahead and...
Are you, are you talking about the cost to...
A negative declaration or a SEQA?
Reduce the ISE, or are you talking about mitigation?
Both, the document itself, the study, and the mitigations, it might be harder to estimate.
Best deal, right?
But the document itself. I mean, I've seen those cost a million dollars easy.
No, it's, it's in the current, at one point, the SECA production.
Production.
Studies that we anticipated would solve.
It's all in there.
Probably ice.
Yeah, okay. So it looks like a state-of-the-art plant. And...
It's not the only new task is this.
You know, Paradise deserves a state-of-the-art plant, but are we really that far out of compliance that we can't find some other way? That's what I'm wondering. I mean, $15 million, we could maybe build a whole new processing plant, state-of-the-art. And the one we have isn't that old, and we haven't even finished paying for it.
How much would a new plant cost?
Let's clarify for Robin, because I mean, we're talking in the parking lot.
I misspoke to you, Robin, it is paid for. It was about $14 million, but that was 20 years ago.
What would it cost now?
40.
I wasn't good at guessing this one, so I'm not going to guess that.
So when did we stop paying for it?
Last year.
Just a year.
Year and a half.
So we could, we got the money for that with Prop 218?
We can't hear you, Kevin.
You've got to take your hand off.
We already identified another project that was taking the funds that were associated with that.
Okay. Yeah, and I wish we were talking about hydropower production, John Heinecke's idea, because that's a more urgent need to be able to power our existing plant, I think. So I really hate to be doing something like this, you know, as much as I am an environmentalist, zero, zero emissions, zero effluents coming out of this plant for a town that has no sewer system? It's kind of silly, isn't it? The amount of pollution that this town is producing, and we're talking about something that just seems so negligible. So I wish we could prioritize things better, and...
Robin, we're prioritizing EPAism, so...
Yeah, I understand. But, you know, it's obvious you're going to be going ahead with this and doing SEQA, and so I can only ask really that you give more serious consideration and start pursuing alternatives, giving more serious consideration to... The one thing I know to do is ozonation. If that could reduce the problem enough that we could not have a fine, you know, the cost of an annual permit is significant, but, you know, we could pay the cost of an annual permit for a whole lot of years, considering $15 million for this plant. So I guess that's all I...
So I want to, we normally don't address public speakers, but I want us to address these, because these are concerns that I'm sure Robin's been talking with a lot of people about, that you have too.
I'm living in a closet now, really.
Well, there's problems that should be out there, should be on record, so... So when she's talking about using ozone, that only cleans the water aspect, or it doesn't settle out particles, correct?
Correct.
Aluminum, alum that we...
The only thing ozone does is it changes your pre-chlorination from chlorine liquid currently to ozone. Ozone has energy costs associated with it, it's got probably as much or more safety risk involved storing oxygen as does chlorine gas. It's not a, it's not a fix-all, that's for sure.
She asked me had we looked at any of these things. I said, well, you know, AECom is a firm that's looking at solving our problem, not solving our problem with just the most expensive project they could find, because for them as engineers, they're looking to solve our problem. They're not the ones building the, they're not going to build the plant, they're not going to do it, they're looking to solve our problem.
I think Carl may be able to help with the ozone pressure.
Yeah, and they have a full staff, if I understand correctly, of people that work with SEQA and work on, you know, ozone or UV and all the different wetlands, all the different things. You've got all, you've dealt with all these different things, so Robin thought maybe there was a little conflict of interest in there. but you're a full-service engineering corporation, so you're providing us with the best solution to our problem. And NPSD is not going to keep giving us a permit, so you can say, "We can just keep paying for the permit."
Well, can we just add, you know, another budget line item that they can provide, you know, something on paper, a report about how ozone doesn't work as well as what they're producing? Because it seems like if we can produce fewer DCBMs and manage the amounts coming out... I mean, what I heard tonight is that our water is so clean that the secondary treatment doesn't have enough gunk to even, you know, centrifuge. You know, that problem is that our water is already so clean, so...
It's the discharge that's the problem, not the water.
Yeah, but the amount, yeah, the, really, I do understand what's going on here. But just, just give some consideration to some alternative considerations as you also go forward.
We did, that's what...
There's nothing for me to read.
I think all those documents have been here and gone because we talked about...
We had an alternative analysis.
Yeah.
I asked for, I asked for reports, I didn't get anything on ozone.
Amen, we could probably...
This is the third time I've been here.
Just so...
This has been on for...
Three years or four years.
More than that.
And I'd love to see more than one page on wetlands. I mean, really, this is a good idea.
We exceeded five minutes long ago, so after waiting for a couple of minutes, I turned over the three-minute timer. So there's been a lot of discussion back and forth, I just want to give you a fair amount of time yet. So when this, when the sand drains through, we'll call it and ask for the next public comment. But do you have something else you'd like to bring up?
I thank you for your consideration of everyone's opinion.
And thank you, Robin, for bringing those up, yeah. In determining what we've already done in the past, all of that isn't easily available, probably. For example, we did consider wetlands and considered it and considered it again. And then Bill took off to just, even after the board decided not to go with the wetlands alternative, Bill continued to pursue that. And early on, there were, it seems to me like in our discussions, we had, we were looking for the best way to get rid of this problem. So it's too bad, maybe we don't have a nice concise program that says, "This is what we've considered, this is what we haven't." Carl, did you have something to add to that?
I can only comment if you'd like, because of the problem of ozone pressure. Ozone is very strong. It's more expensive than chlorine. Reason why you have chlorine, chlorine, you're back for the disinfectant, is that it costs less money to operate a plant because chlorine, it does ozone. Ozone requires more sophisticated equipment, which is a huge dimension, but it just costs more. It's also over to you, for your particular situation, because the waterfall coming out of reservoirs vary. Even down the road, the stockyards and other places are taking water out of the river, they're using ozone for pretreatment because the waterfall is so bad, it can have to do this really strong process to kill the water in there and address issues like this and wood. But there's, it's not a panacea, I think it is. Yes, it may not, it may not discreate this, some of the trihalone things that are concerned, but it will cause other disinfectant byproducts, particularly ones that are bromines. It could actually make the DCBM situation worse by going over. And this is from a head worker in my company, he worked at Red Hex, he made equipment for that. But he has designed more ozone systems than anybody else probably in the whole country. And he assured me that what I'm telling you is accurate. So he may just be displacing one problem for another by switching to ozone, and it's going to cost more. That's bottom line to Ford's particular project. It's not a bad situation.
Thank you for the input, Carl. Okay, I kind of think I know the answer to this, but are there any other public members out there that would like to speak to this issue? There being none, we're going to be bringing it back to the board and open it up for discussion, comments, questions, before we entertain a motion, or we'll entertain motions. But Bill, did you have anything you wanted to bring up at this point?
I just, back to the finances. Chico virtually went bankrupt, they laid off all sorts of people. At one time, they were a high-spending outfit, had all sorts of money. Their city council, their management and everything said, "Let's spend, spend, spend," and then they hit the wall. Management was gone, employees were gone, wages were cut, and they're coming back. The town of Paradise did basically the same thing. If we continue the way we are with the spending, and this means month-to-month, I haven't heard about, maybe I will in two weeks, about how we're going to cut expenses in this district to be able to stay within our, what money we have. But if we don't straighten it out, we're going to be letting employees go. We're going to be cutting overheads and services and charging for services we don't charge for now. We will forget about this and we'll end up fighting with Jeremy and his crew on how we can possibly solve this if we don't do something. And I agree very much with Barry that we need to act on Prop 318. Nothing has come to us out of the Finance Committee about this for months. We haven't seen any kind of a report from the Finance Committee for months on this. I don't know what's going on, I'm just a board member, I'm not on the Finance Committee. But even if you're not doing anything, you should tell us that. I assume you've been doing something and it should be reported to the board, good, bad, or indifferent. Because we look to you for leadership on the board. Now, as far as the wetlands, I'm continuing with the deal on this and working on it. And I'll give Jeremy a copy because I sent a copy to Doug the other day in the mail. And we'll be doing some work hopefully Tuesday on, with the man who builds wetlands and looking at a site up here. Now, the situation is the same on the wetlands as it's been all along. The people that have used them, the most recent one was this Oregon, do you remember the name of the waterfall people said?
Up in there, the T, Laughing Waters or something?
Yeah. Okay. They had two, I'll just recall.
Laughing Waters and Laughing.
Laughing Waters. Any rate, that was a resolve of two sewage company and a commercial company looking into commercial, conventional, that's what we're hearing here, tried and true design. And when they got their design costs, they went down and sat around as a group and they ended up hiring another firm. C, what is it, CHM2 or something?
CHM2 Hill?
Yeah.
CH2M Hill?
Okay, they ended up designing this thing. They created a huge wetland, over 200 acres. They processed the water and dropped it right back into the river, meeting all the EPA standards for it. It cost a fraction of what the conventional design was.
Is this a drinking water facility or sewage plant?
Sewage plant.
Sewage plant, even worse than anything we have here. Problem with the... You can look it up on the internet, but the problem was much worse than we have here for water quality. And as far as aluminum, you asked me about, said, "How are you going to do that with wetlands?" It's being done. You've got evidence out of the South and also out of Canada. I know it's a far way, but they control the aluminum. We all, through that same engineering firm, I found out how to control the chemical we're worried about. And this will come when I finally, this is a very busy time of year for me, so I haven't done much about it. But Tuesday, we'll be looking at how to build a constructed wetland like the man that's coming builds wetlands for wildlife down at Great Lodge with farmers, things, you know, big deal. Won't be much expense, the problem is, can I bring enough evidence to you to say that it works? And can I bring the price in at $2 to $3 million if that, if it'll work? I don't know yet. And then it'll be referred back to an engineering firm. Now, as far as these guys having somebody skilled in wetlands, the last time I talked to you, you didn't have anybody on your staff that had any experience with building a constructed wetland. Ed? Or, I far...
Tom.
Tom, I'm sorry.
I'll go by just that.
Ed, tonight.
We do have people who are skilled in wetlands. What you're talking about is a water treatment system for aluminum, and it's not used.
No, it is used as, they're constructed wetlands for one. They're not, they're not natural wetlands that have all sorts of rules.
And I think you, well, I don't know what the treatment volume you were talking about, but there's a number of issues that are associated with that particular process that are not suitable for this site. And I think we went through that whole exercise and that feasibility study that we did. We still would assert that it is not an appropriate solution for this location.
Well, we'll see what I get.
Yeah.
But that's all I...
Any other questions, comments by the board?
I just think that we should just do it all tonight. Like you said, we have off-ramps and so forth, and so I'd rather do it now. I don't want to take any chance of getting off schedule, and I don't want to get fined $10,000 a day. I just feel there's no reason to postpone it.
Any comments from you, Seth?
I'm like, I don't think we should postpone it, we need to keep on our time schedule. I don't see why amending the third choice to where we just do an adjustment of scope, but not realigning the budget, we're just adjusting the scope.
If you, if you did it that way, that would eliminate the need to...
We've got our number.
...money now, but if it would require you to go back through this process again, it's three months.
This is, this is so much fun.
But yeah, we're going to, and then approve the $429,000, which I'm sure Director Flusher will ask you to bring down to 410 by that time, so...
I'm going to have him raise it.
Yeah, you'll raise it, okay.
Maybe 500, though.
At least 20%.
At least, yeah. So I would do that, but I want to thank you guys for taking time to answer like Robin's questions. She had some good questions, I'm like, well, we explored all those issues in the preliminary. She's looking for some kind of report that we generated. Not sure that that actually exists, but...
Well, we just got the request, we put some up on the website. I don't know if the alternative of that analysis got up there yet or not, but...
When you got her email?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. They're all valid, but I'm sure that we've seen...
Everything we've done over the last three years.
I already went through those.
When did we start this process? Seems like it's been five years.
Well, we started talking about it at least, 2009, when we knew that our permit extension was not going to work.
It was a hot item of discussion.
Yeah.
I've been on the board now three years, it was long since I said it was a hot item of being discussed.
Before you were elected.
Before I was elected, yeah.
Anything else from...
I just just want to say that the ad hoc committee has not made a report when we had our last meeting, and we haven't had a meeting since then. And Kevin and George are working very hard on Prop 218. We're trying to expedite it, and we want to get it out as soon as possible. But if you don't do it right, then you can be in trouble.
Well, with any formula, you have to have the first number before you can generate the second number. So the first number is, how much is the project going to cost? And then you can start...
That's just part of...
I'm adding the rest of the numbers from there. So I'm sure Kevin could stick numbers in all day long, they're not realistic numbers until...
Well, I can just tell you, we have a draft cost service study. It's with the committee, it just got to the committee this week, it's with legal. I'm going to need to meet with legal first and discuss their issues with it, then we'll meet with the committee, discuss their issues with them, we'll fine-tune it, and hopefully we'll have a board workshop in early December.
Okay, we'll leave it early December.
Okay.
I thought you said summer.
So, early December. That being said, that was a kind of a tangent area there, based upon Bill's comments, but the committee hadn't had a meeting since the last board meeting, so, and we still haven't. And we will certainly report back at the next board meeting.
If it was easy, we would have got it done a long time ago. It isn't easy.
Yeah. At this point, I want to go back to the public to see, based upon comments heard by the board or clarifications from our contractors, if there are any more public comments or statements that would like to be made. I knew I could count on you.
Just like I said, I'm hearing good things because I'm hearing people recognizing the urgency of getting this thing done. So I appreciate George and Kevin's working on this. Hopefully, when you said December, I thought it said September.
I thought he said summer.
It's not an easy math, Carl, boy.
Regardless of what the numbers are going to be, because the project, the important numbers are the people that have to have it. They need to know that, and that's...
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I'd like to make a comment when you get done.
Okay, well, there's no other public comments then, so we're back to the board for motions or whatever we're going to do.
Well, my comment is to thank the engineering firm for very detailed, well-done report from Carl because he had to answer, Tom got a free ride on this one, Carl got the part of it. I appreciate your work and so forth, and I've forgotten the other fellow's name.
Jeff.
Jeff, I appreciate what your answers were at the time you went to. And I appreciate Neil's staying, speaking tonight, he doesn't like to talk in public.
And Jeremy.
And Jeremy.
That was...
Oh, yes, Jeremy, the government, I don't know.
Take everybody in the crowd, we pretty much covered everybody.
I really appreciate him coming in.
I'm going to move approval to accept the preliminary design report from AECOM and authorized staff to proceed with the recommended designs for component one and one A.
Second.
Okay, we're going to take these...
Free motions?
Motion separately.
I can make it all one if you want to.
No, let's, let's take them separately, I think that's...
Well, I thought that was a better way to go.
Going to be our best way of going. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion by the board?
Yes, I have a couple of things I'd like to say. What I read over these many, many, many times after we got them, I highlighted a couple of things here. Except preliminary design report, and that's basically all that we're doing. And the staff would be your staff that we've already committed to, and our staff for working on this type of thing. And I would think we would be foolish not to have that continue on because it really wouldn't cost us any more money than we've already got committed. And so I'm speaking in favor of this.
I agree, I'm...
Well, it's showing the vote.
There being no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The motion passes 4-1 with Director Kellogg dissenting.
I move approval to accept recommendations for alternative components three through eight and authorized staff to proceed with the recommended designs.
Second.
Okay. The, any further discussion on this?
Yes, I have some.
Go ahead, please.
I did, I was going to react to this one when I was a while waiting it, but I looked at it, and out of the items three through eight, there's five of them that we shouldn't be doing even if we're not doing a project up there. Even on the list, the road pavement should be patched and the water rights and all that other stuff, so there's five of those eight that we really need to have done anyway, for the benefit of the plant. So I'm speaking in favor of that.
Doug, I'm, I'm in agreement with you this time.
You are, I'll beat him.
I am.
There's a spray can, I want to write that on the wall. I need a step ladder and a pop can, and we'll beat it right on the wall.
I was, when I, when I first dove into this, I said, "There's got to be something, there's got to be somewhere that we can put off a big chunk of expenditure." And that was what I started in on reading this about. I wanted to delay spending a half a million dollars here or $300,000 there. But when you look at what you're doing in the major surgery we're going to be doing down at the plant site, if we don't go ahead and make these little, real small, small cost adjustments here, that's, that's pretty foolish on what it's going to end up costing us when we do go back to revisit those either one at a time or all at the same time. And as such, we're going to have to find other areas to cut back in because I think we should do this. And as such, we're gonna have to find other areas to cut back in, because I think we should do this. Any, any further comments or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any aye, any opposed?
No.
The motion passes four one with Director Kellogg dissenting.
I'm gonna, uh, see how I do this one. So, I'm gonna move approval to authorize the general manager to execute amendment four dash three with AECom.
It's three, the four is corrected to a three.
Okay, okay, sorry.
I thought it was 4.3 also.
Yeah, I thought, well, I looked around for four dash three continually and I'm like, well, I don't see it, but okay. So, amendment three with AECom at a cost at a, excuse me, at a no-cost adjustment to scope for the process water recycle project. That sound good?
You're approving the amendment with no money?
That just means they're working off the.
Adjustment to scope.
The current 1.2 million dollar budget.
So, does that work, I mean, as far as?
Do we have a second?
I couldn't second that one. But how, how are you gonna reword this, George? Because if we, if we don't have a loophole so we don't have to pay those guys the 400,000, that's a half a million bucks.
That's what I just said.
So, you didn't say that?
No, he's saying no money. That's what he said.
No money.
He's saying no money.
Oh.
No money, just an adjustment to scope.
Hell, I wouldn't even ask.
No cost adjustment to scope.
But then we're gonna have to come back and approve it later. Now, we have to come back and do it again.
So, no cost adjustment to scope.
Motion, wasn't it, George?
Well, that, I think you got it right. Just so everybody understands, it's a no-cost adjustment to scope, but there, it will not complete the project without.
Let's do this again.
Money.
You're gonna zero out the 1.2 million dollars before, hopefully before you zero it out, you're gonna meet again and you're to discuss the money at that future date.
The 429,000.
Or 500,000.
Which will go up.
Then.
Okay, so that's the, that's the motion, do we have a second?
You're great, you know, kids are gonna need GI Joe with Kung-Fu Grip, so, you know.
Bill, Bill seconded it.
Okay.
Okay, so now, we're gonna get into the discussion phase and, and so I, I will discuss this. I agree with Larry, I think that we should go ahead and get rid of this task now. I think that when we come back in two months or three months or whatever the timeframe is, we're gonna be just spending time on this, going over, we're, we're not gonna be backing out of this deal.
Unless you want to pay 10,000 a day.
And, and so I think that we should just approve it with the proposed changes, but that's my opinion at this point. And so, I said it and we'll get to a vote here in a minute.
They agree with him.
Anybody else?
I want to make clear, we're gonna be continuing with work with the engineering firm for at least 90 days probably before we have to worry about the next funds. Now, I know that's gonna please you, right, Jeremy? That we're continuing working on the project, we're not stopping the project, it's continuing to be worked on, right?
Yeah, that is, I understand that you're gonna be achieving it because of your time schedule. There's still money to deposit, pay the consultant, but you're not committed to finishing 100% of the project, so that affects the time schedule a year from now, or whatever that date is, you know, so, if you can check the box.
We're good for now, though.
You're good for now, so to speak, as far as my group giving you a phone call and saying you're behind schedule.
But, but we're on Jerry, we're, we're on Jeremy's list.
There are future deadlines as well.
Yeah, I understand, but thank you.
I still don't understand that 429,000, what, what will we be talking about doing to pay that? We'll have to do it when they run out of money. When you run out of money.
When they run out of this one, they're, they're stopping work, they're not gonna continue any further until we come back and authorize the completion of the.
Okay, now, at the final design stage, components one and two, you're going to stop before you spend an initial 353.
353,000, right?
I thi, I think to clarify, what, what, we will, we will push forward with the design. I think by the time you get to.
Top 218.
Top 218, we'll be at about 60% design.
Okay.
And you'll have your environmental, and you'll be on schedule. And at that point, you know, you may come to a junction in the road where you have to make a decision to pull the plug on the whole thing and deal with the potential consequences of, of not being compliant. So, I think, you know, it would be my recommendation to do what Ken talked about, it's gonna save, because you're gonna pull the plug whenever you need to, you know, the commitment to be on schedule and be at least in the appearance of a compliance intent or intent to comply with the regulatory framework would be the, you know, fundamental to completion. If you can't finish it, you can't.
Like Ken just said, and I guess, separate his thing, when you hit 1.2 mil, 15,000, on your work, you're gonna stop, tell George, you know, you'll totally beg, when you get 110.
Actually, we're obligated to tell you, when we hit 90% of that.
Yeah.
You've got, as of. As of September 30th, you had 659,000 left to do.
Right, so we're 50%.
We're talking, we're talking March or April, February marks or something like that.
Yeah.
We should be into our, our 218, we should hopefully get that.
And of course, my argument against doing it this particular way is that if we go ahead and fund it now and we don't get 218 passed, well, guess what?
Pull the plug then.
We're gonna have to say, dear George, call Tom.
I, I can't believe this, Ken, you're not agreeing with George, I'm agreeing with him, you're not.
I.
Another spray paint.
You've reached the latter. So, what Ken just said, would we be obligated for the 1.6 million or we could pull out before?
You can, you can approve the 1.6.
At 1.2?
There's no reason to delay this.
You can approve the 1.6 tonight and we can convene a meeting tomorrow, that's at least 24 hours from now, and cancel the contract. And you would, you wouldn't have spent any of that remaining balance.
And cancel the contract.
So, it, it's really, what you're talking about is, in my mind.
Sixes.
Is meaningless, their distinction's meaningless, because.
I think they're it meaningless, because what, if this passes, we're gonna have to come back after 218, if it passes, and say, now we want to spend another 429,000. It's ridiculous, we've already done it.
Okay, we have everybody's opinions here now?
Well, let's say if that did happen, could you just pick up the project, would we, would we file the 429,000 and continue on?
We'd have to come back and vote.
You know, it, that really depends on what time date it is.
Yeah.
Essentially, yes, as long as there isn't a significant change in the scope and it happens within the reasonable timeline. It's, what happens typically in a situation like this, I've got one project that's been lingering for 80 years. What happens is that you get to a stopping point, you shut pens down, package the stuff up, and you move on with other things until the funding comes back.
And technology changes, scope changes, everything.
You know, people migrate out, you've got to pick it up, you've got to re-initiate the project, there's a cost associated with that.
Yeah, very true.
So, the timeline.
But within that timeline, you can basically pick up the pieces.
Absolutely.
Short period.
It reads.
Yeah. Okay. We have our, our motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. No. If the motion, motion fails, two ayes to three noes.
Yeah. We're gonna say.
I move to approve.
Through Kurt Baller.
To authorize the general manager to execute amendment three with AECom at a cost not to exceed 429,900 for the adjustment to scope and realignment of the budget to advance the design of the process water recycle project.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
George, Ann, just so you know, the dissenting voters were Director Hunt, Seth Corolla, and Larry Duncan.
Hi, direct comments now, we got a motion?
No. We, we have a motion before us, yes, if you'd like to speak to that?
Yeah, basically, we're spending money we don't have. In a situation where we're having a hard time every month to make our payroll. And I'm going, I understand Dustin from the law what you're talking about. But to me, this is just foolishness in to, in a business, to spend money you don't have and we're not assured that 218's gonna pass. And we don't, until you guys get busy with the finance committee and George and Kevin, now you've got some pressure on you, you really gotta, to get this thing done and get it out to the public. But I just think you should go ahead with the 218 thing and not spend, commit to spending money you don't have. I know Dustin has a way out for it.
Okay, so, just like, just like was just explained and what you just reiterated is that we are not close to spending that money at this point in time. I'm sure George and Kevin are gonna come to us and say, hey, we're real close to that 1.2, we're gonna be dipping into that 429, we should have some reports, some things that will help us do it, we should be into our 218. We're not spending that 429,000 now, it just saves us a trip coming back here. Doing this all over again, because no matter what, we are still agreed to the 1.2 million. All five of us just agreed to the 1.2 million, no matter what our vote was, we still just agreed to the 1.2 million that we already have, that we already have here. So, we're not spending the 429,000 now, we're saving ourselves a trip back here. If you want a trip back here, well, I guess then we can all collect $100 and.
Well, if we don't get 218 passed, we're probably not gonna be able to run.
He's not gonna be through his 1.2 million.
I would agree.
Until after the 218, and you're absolutely right about what you're saying, but.
We're not gonna be able to.
Tom's got a ways before he's at the 1.2 million, because we're not.
You don't have the 1.2 million you keep talking about.
We've already agreed to the 1.2 million, you've already decided that, that's long ago.
Yes, but we don't have the money to pay that.
Because we're not paying it today.
Okay, well.
What I'm saying is, you're agreeing to 429,000 for a future date. So, if you don't understand what I'm saying, then that's okay.
You're spending money, you're spending money that we don't have.
We're not spending anything.
Yeah, you are. I've watched Chico, Paradise and other entities do the same thing and they think, well, 10 years is a long time for now, or a year now, or whatever it happens to be. Your general manager, George, came up with a very good way of getting around this. The contractor agreed to it completely, to make it work, and we wouldn't have to come back here, Sepp, we could do this in a general board meeting in three minutes.
I'm sure these gentlemen want to drive all the way up, wherever they're.
Just, just for clarification, I agree that we could do a no-cost change. We, you can, you can cut that feedback to one limit and say, stop at one limit, we can agree to that. That'd be fine, but it doesn't, it doesn't mitigate the problem. We still have a change in scope.
No.
You have, you, like, like Bill said, you don't have the 1.2 million in your pocket at this point in time. And you'll, you know, you may get to a point where you say, well, we can't, we can't raise that money. You gotta stop working, and you're gonna give me that call. And that, that may come to pass, I would not want that to come to pass, you wouldn't want that to come to pass, but it may.
How would the state feel?
We've heard this.
I think, you know, you're not, you're not actually, you're not technically spending the money, you're committing to it if you, if you bring it in. If you don't bring it in, you're gonna pull the plug, right?
We're not spending anything that we don't have.
The effect will be the same, we either spend it when we have it or we come back in and say, we're not spending it.
That means we'll have to come back here, Sepp. Only if we don't have it. Only if we don't have it. If we don't have it, we.
You're talking out of both sides of your mouth.
Optimism is a little greater than yours. So, I will agree to that.
We asked Kevin's opinion, he's hardly said anything tonight, we can take this away from him for what we can hear you. What's your opinion about this, Kevin?
It's, if you, if you approve it, just like what Tom said, if you approve it, you don't have the money, you pull the plug. The thing is, is what I've said, is if you want this project done, you're gonna have to raise rates. Simple.
Five years ago, four years ago, three years ago, two years ago.
And we will bring the cost service study that is, we feel is very, very good to this board and the board's gotta, it's gotta take action. So, if you want the project done, raise rates.
And we will ask the public for permission to do that.
And as the public, bear in mind, we didn't ask to find this project, we could've thought of a million other ways to spend $15 million. Unfortunately, it was shoved upon us, forced upon us.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yep. Any further director comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Vote is three to two in favor with Directors Kellogg and Fleischer dissenting. Thank you very much for all of the staff and contractors and state representation and half of our pub, half of our public is still here at this meeting.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, we got two-thirds of the public here, that's right.
No, he's, he's not public.
Dan?
Dan's here, but the whole.
Need a German? No, we got a director's comments.
So, we have, we do have, we got a rowdy group over here. I'm gonna start into director's comments, Sepp, do you like to start?
My comments, Bob and Dave.
No, yeah.
No comments.
Do you have comments?
Okay, I wanna say the ad hoc committee. I'm making a comment on the director's comments.
Doug would like to be heard.
Tom, I want to be heard.
I think with the building, so we can do it right there.
I think we can go home now.
Tom.
No, I just wanna go home.
I'm gonna say no.
Nice meeting you. I'm in paradise, I just wanna go home.
You're home.
He worked with Neil more than me.
Director comment here, what's it about to you?